All right. We're going to go ahead and call to order the June twentieth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Board of Education in accordance with Government Code Section five four nine five zero Execuador and Education Code Section three five one four zero Execuador at seventeen oh one. At this point, we're going to go ahead and be adjourning to closed session for the purpose of discussing the following materials. Number one, public employee discipline dismissal, suspension, release, leave, assignment, non-relection, non-reappointment, resignation, reinstatement pursuant to Government Code five four nine five seven. Settlement for employee number nine five five two. Number two, personal matter, public employee appointments, employment pursuant to Government Code five four nine five seven, Assistant Superintendent, Principals, Directors, and Coordinators. Number three, conference with labor negotiators, Dr. Alex Chernus, Superintendent, David Giardano, Assistant Superintendent Business Services, Nancy Blade, Interim Assistant Superintendent Human Resources in regards to C S E A, A P L E, P L U M. And number four, we're going to look at expulsion, number two three two three A two. Is there anyone present that would like to address any of these items? Okay. Seeing that there is none, we will go ahead and adjourn to closed session at seventeen oh two. Good evening, folks. We're going to go ahead and reconvene into regular session at eighteen twelve or six twelve for those of you. The report out of closed session includes, number one, the Board took action in closed session to approve the settlement between the district and certificated, certificated employee number nine five five two. The motion was by Ms. Blades, seconded by Todd Frazier. Frazier, yes. And five oh was the vote. The second item, the Board took action in closed session to appoint Olivia Young, Kishi, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, effective June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. The motion was brought forward by Todd Frazier, seconded by Leander Blades, and motion carried five oh. The third item, the Board met and voted to approve the three-day unpaid suspension from June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three to June twenty-third, twenty twenty-three for employee number one one eight one four. That motion was brought forward by Marilyn Anderson and seconded by Ms. Carrie Buck. The motion carried five oh as well. Item number four, the Board met and voted to approve the stipulated expulsion agreement between Placentia Yorbalinda Unified School District and the parents of two three two three A two. That motion was brought forward by Trustee Buck, seconded by Trustee Frazier, and carried forward with a vote of five oh. This time, I would like to go ahead and turn over to Dr. Chernus to introduce our new Assistant Superintendent of Education Services.
Thank you, President Youngblood. It's my privilege to introduce the woman to my right who will now be serving as our new Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Olivia Young. We're very excited to have you on board. And your experience in our district and leading our Valencia High School and working with our students at all levels is going to be a great asset to our district. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Young to say a few words.
Thank you, President Youngblood, members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Chernus, and Executive Cabinet. I'm honored and humbled to be entrusted with this responsibility. PYL has been my home for the last eleven years, and I am wholly committed to our students, staff, and community. We have so much to be proud of in this district and a strong foundation for us to build off of as we enter this next chapter together. I really look forward to working alongside our district and our site leaders, our educational services team, and our families to achieve our shared goal of student success. So just thank you once again for this honor and privilege to continue to serve in this new capacity. I am deeply grateful.
Any comments? Yeah, you can clap, absolutely clap. Comments?
Welcome aboard, we're glad to have you. I've worked with Olivia for a number of years now, eleven, as you had mentioned, and got to know you pretty well in this capacity out in the district. So I'm looking forward to working with you more closely.
Just wanted to say congratulations for this new position and also earning your doctorate. I'm going to enjoy calling you Dr. Young, and I look forward to collaborating and making wonderful things happen in this district.
Straight up.
I am very, very excited, and I think this year is just going to be amazing.
I too am very excited for this. I see a very positive direction.
Well, I'm not going to be the only one that doesn't say something. I'm really excited. This is great, no, I'm excited, so this is going to be good.
Excellent, okay. So at this time, I asked Trustee Blades to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's let the record show that all our Board members are present with the exception of our student Board member. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the June twentieth, twenty twenty-three Board of Education Agenda as recommended by Dr. Chernus.
There is a correction, however, there is, it's amended.
Is it amended?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, excellent. So a motion by Ms. Blades, seconded by Ms. Anderson. So this is an amended agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries five oh. Okay, so this will be the part in which I'll call for a public comment. There are public comment cards in the foyer. Cards must be completed and turned in prior to the designated time for public comment. We'll provide a maximum of three minutes per person. If translation is needed, an additional three minutes will be given. Please let us know so we can know ahead of time and ensure that we're properly prepared. We do have a civility policy, Education Code two twenty, prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race, or ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or any other characteristics that are contained in the definition of hate crimes set forth by Section four two two point five five of the Penal Code, including immigration status. Okay, I need a motion to approve minutes, folks.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular, the minutes from the regular meeting on June sixth as recommended by the Superintendent.
Excellent, second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Blades. Any comments regarding the sixth? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries five oh, excellent. Okay, tonight, folks, we, we have two public hearings. The first public hearing will be, we'll start off with the doctor, or Mr. David Giardano, should be doctor, but.
Thank you, and good evening. I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Gary Davis, who's the Executive Director with California Republic Leadership Academy, also known as C R L A, who will present information on their charter school petition that the district received back in April of this year. Since Mr. Davis is out of state this evening, he'll be presenting the information remotely via Zoom with the assistance of Ms. Brittany Rehneer, the school principal, who's with us this evening. After Mr. Davis and Ms. Rehneer complete the presentation, we will hold the required public hearing on the charter school petition in order to determine the level of support for the petition by teachers employed by our district, other employers of our district, as well as our parents within the district. With that said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Davis and Ms. Rehneer.
Superintendent, I really appreciate this opportunity to be here in front of you today remotely. I appreciate your flexibility. I'm currently at the National Charter School Association Conference in Austin, Texas, where it is eight twenty PM here, and it's ninety-nine degrees. Truly a pleasure to be here with you. And first of all, I want to really just give high compliments to your staff. They've been just a joy to work with. Dave and Jeremy is sort of who we've worked with so far, and just really appreciated the, the way in which we're starting this relationship. And as we introduce the California Republic Leadership Academy, I want to just kind of point out a couple of things. And first and foremost, we desire a very strong partnership with you all. We hope at the end of this process, you analyze our petition, you think we're worthy of, of being approved, and we, we get, and we're approved and authorized by you, and we get to work with you for years to come. So that's our, that's our strong desire. We really, really hope that that could be the case. But also that, you know, our school, you, you all have a number of outstanding educational programs within your school district. We believe that we bring one more, one more outstanding program that can be something for the community to be excited about. We believe that communities are stronger when they offer a mixture of traditional and charter public schools together. We think all kids learn in different ways, and the more options we have for kids, the, the better for them. So let's introduce the C R L A Yorbalinda. Next slide, please, Brittany, thank you. So I'm Gary Davis, I'm the co-founder and Executive Director of the school. I've worked in and around California public education for over twenty years. I've specifically been a startup, been a part, I've, I've led the startup of a charter school similar to this one. Brittany Rehneer, she's, she's driving the clicker tonight. She's our school leader, our principal, amazing educator, administrator, and you'll get a chance to, to hear from her as well during this presentation. You can see our Board of Directors listed here, but Kevin Pratt, Kevin Pratt is our Board President. He's in the audience, the front row. And he's a parent, former FBI agent, but also President, President of our Board of Directors and co-founder of the school. C R L A Yorbalinda would be our second school. We're currently in the midst of launching our first school in San Juan Capistrano. We're on track for an August seventeenth opening. We're, we're on track for a full enrollment. I've got a great facility, we've already, we've, as of today, hired every one of our teachers, and we're in a great place to launch, so we're excited about that. Next slide, please. So the mission of the California Republic Leadership Academy is to develop the next generation of leaders in mind, character, and practice through an education that leads scholars, which we call our students, to servant leadership through the pursuit of truth and the development of virtue and wisdom. Your district mission is to inspire all students through rigorous and relevant educational experiences that empower them to become responsible, ethical, and contributing citizens. We think our mission is consistent with yours, and that's why we really believe we'll be a, we would be a strong fit for your community. The vision for C R L A is over eleven years in the making. Personally, I've, for the last over decade, I've, I've studied classical schools, leadership schools, other charter schools, visited, analyzed, been a part of starting one, and it's, it's the culmination of sort of all that research that has led us to the specific C R L A academic program and mission and vision. And, and what you have is, what we have is unique. It's, it's a classical leadership educational model that focuses on civic and entrepreneurial leadership, uses the Franklin Covey Leader and Me curriculum, and at its foundation is a classical education school. And it's really, like, there are other schools that do maybe one of those things, but we are, we are unique in that we do all three of those together. Our vision is to inspire and empower the next generation of California's leaders to excel academically, be proud Americans, proud Californians, and to impact the world with excellence derived from an education like that which produced the inspired servant leaders who founded our great nation. So in short, we hope to help, help raise the next generation of leaders. Next slide, please. Core values of any charter school are really kind of what define it. It's, it's flavor, if you, if you will. It's the foundation of a school. Our core values, in the interest of time, I won't read them all to you because I know we only have ten minutes, but, but just suffice to say is like, there certainly are other schools and organizations out there that may have one or two or a couple of these core values, but it's the unique combination of these eight core values that really make our school what it is, and we're very proud of that. And next slide, please. And, you know, how else are we, we unique? So a couple of things. One, no cell phones during the school day. We think that they're a distraction to students. We're not, you know, they won't, they won't be allowed in the classroom. But along the same line of distractions, our students will wear uniforms. I think that's really important for building the culture of the school. Elevated dress code for staff. We will use the core knowledge curriculum, which is coupled with, as I mentioned before, the Leader and Me, Franklin Covey Leader and Me curriculum. We'll also heavily use mentors that will help our students in a small group setting to really internalize leadership and internalize classics, either classical text or classical, or, or historical documents. Using mentors, we'll really be able to get into the weeds. We'll use, we'll do a lot of community service. Our, you know, we believe that to lead a community, you have to serve your community, and the way we'll do that is by being actively involved in the service of, service and civic, you know, civic fabric of a community. We will be, we will have a strong, mission-aligned culture that will begin each day with a daily virtue reading. We'll really work hard to build a culture of respect on campus, and we'll be a, we'll be a, I also like to point out, we'll be a safe place for former homeschool families. That's what we've seen in our current, our current school is a lot of students that have opted out of the public school system are coming back because they feel comfortable with our curriculum and our culture. So I'm going to turn it over, if we're running out of time, I want to turn it over to our school leader, Brittany, who I know you can see right now, and I thank you for your time, and I look forward, we'll be available for questions, but look forward to meeting you in person at the, in the August meeting.
Thank you. So when not only thinking about my own children and their education, but also future students, the goals of C R L A truly are like no other school. So one of the first goals is to develop thinkers, entrepreneurs, and statesmen with character competence and the capacity to do the right thing and to do it with excellency in every field. To accomplish this, students are given countless opportunities to participate in learning that is specifically designed to encourage them not only to ask questions, but to find answers to those questions. They will be encouraged to design and create while building upon their own ideas, not just ideas given to them in a textbook. They will have opportunities to lead and learn what it truly means to be a leader that represents honesty, servanthood, integrity, compassion, confidence, humility, and creativity. In my career as an administrator, I firsthand witnessed the development of these leadership, leadership skills and how it builds up confidence, and it not only creates amazing leaders, but it also causes students to thrive academically and socially when those were areas of concern prior. And we will nourish the freedom and instruct the principles of liberty. They will learn to maintain these freedoms by being taught critical thinking skills. They will participate in Socratic seminars, which require a student to think for themselves. They will have to link a sourced text in real-life circumstances. Instead of relying solely on textbooks, they will be given countless primary sources to analyze, interpret, and form thoughts and opinions for themselves. We have a goal to produce citizens who will internalize the skills and methods and structure of the education they receive at C R L A so that they can go forth and heal a broken society, preserve freedom, and ensure peace and prosperity for humanity. They will leave with the knowledge that they have unique talents that are greater than themselves, and they are meant to be a noble service to those around them. Finally, we have the goal to produce self-motivated, competent, and lifelong learners, students who aren't afraid to get back up and try again, students who learn what to do and how to complete, and what needs to be done without needing outside incentive, and students who will have the skills and yearning to continually learn and grow. So after explaining our mission statement and goals, we had a great response when we went into the community for petition signatures and to evaluate the demand. In just a few weeks, we obtained almost two hundred separate families, which totals up to just under the planned enrollment for the first year. Many of these signatures come from families who are currently in private schools or homeschooled, which would bring more of these families back into public education. Also, while acquiring parent signatures, we obtained seven credential teacher signatures who have a strong interest in teaching at C R L A. This totals to over half the teaching staff needs for the first year as well. Teachers stated that they believe in the mission statement, and they want to be part of creating great leaders in our city and state. So as we gathered signatures, we asked for some of the parents to tell us their thoughts, and these statements speak for themselves. Parents are excited at the opportunity for choice and something new and the district isn't currently offering. So as I begin to read these quotes, can anyone who is here in support of California Leadership Republic Academy, please stand with me? All right, so, sorry, I can't read that far. "I am excited about having a school for our children that offers high education standards." I'm sorry, I can't even read, I can't read that far away. Can I get your screen? "With a focus in leadership and moral values to produce healthy life skills. Under this model, both of my children have grown empathy for others, learned the value of community, and are becoming lifelong learners. I am thrilled to have a school that will support these teachings. We can't wait for a school that is invested in a strong future generation that will live morally and have a passion for learning and lead our country with victory and compassion for others. Our community needs education options that focus on character education and leadership opportunities. I want a school for my children that will teach them to be free thinkers and challenge them to go back to the source while acting in a respectful manner. We want C R L A so that our children can go back to public schools." So thank you so much for your time, and we really look forward to working with the school board and the district as we continue this process.
Well, thank you, Mr. Davis and Ms. Rehneer. If there are any questions of the Board at all? If not, we can go into public hearing.
You mentioned at the beginning a strong partnership with the district. Can you, like, tell us more of what that means? Like, what exactly would that look like? What are you saying, what are you asking for specifically?
Yeah, for sure, thank you for asking that question, I appreciate it. I mean, without getting too philosophical in what I've seen from charter schools around the state, you know, charter schools and district schools don't always have, you know, aren't, aren't always in full alignment. And I, and I, I believe it can be. My, my, and I think, so, one, if you are, are authorized, or you'll do, you know, you'll provide oversight to our school, and so, you know, there's just the manner in which we're going to work together and be responsive, and that, you know, that's sort of foundational, I think, kind of a foundational answer. But also, you know, I hope that we grow to a point where you're, you would be really proud of us as a school within your community. And, you know, there are some school districts where they'll put the charter schools as example, as an example, on their website, and say, these are schools that are available in our community. And, you know, that doesn't happen in a lot of communities, so. And, you know, and, and, you know, sharing and professional development, learning from each other. You, you guys, the district, have been around much longer than us. We would have at this point more to learn from you than you from us, but maybe one day, that could be mutual. So those are a few ideas, I think, of how, how I think we could work together, and I'm sure we could, we could develop a lot more as, as we head down the path.
Okay, I have a question, a couple of questions regarding the signatures. Do you know how many of those signatures represent families from the Placentia Yorbalinda area? I just, I did.
She doesn't have that number on hand?
Okay. I, I did some quick checking through your appendix I, and this is really rough numbers, but I found that there was thirty-five residents from Placentia Yorbalinda representing forty-eight students. So I'm just curious, how do you expect to reach your, your goal when a lot of these signatures come from like Burbank, Paramount, Compton, and Huntington Beach and other surrounding areas?
I appreciate you asking that question. The, the, the thing about charter schools is they don't have boundaries. So really, the only requirement to attend a, a public charter school is that you're a resident of California. And, you know, I don't have to tell you, you're uniquely situated, like, right across the street from another, right across the freeway from another, another school district. So I, I do believe in, in reality, we will probably draw from a much wider, wider radius than just, just the Placentia Yorbalinda School District. And in addition, and this, this, between the previous school that I helped, helped to found and our current one, we can look at the registration numbers, and, and I could tell you that roughly a third come from private, previously, were previously enrolled in private school. Roughly a third were previously homeschooled, and they opted out of the public, well, I guess both groups opted out of the public school system. But they're coming back because they like the curriculum, the educational model that we have to offer. And so, yeah, I would, I guess I would, I would answer it that way. You know, our sense is that there's a pretty, pretty strong interest in, and, yeah, and part of it's evidenced by the signature, but really strong interest in enrolling in this type of a school.
Thank you. I have another question. You talked about wanting to, to build a strong partnership, and reading that lovely notebook you gave us. I, to be honest, I haven't read the whole thing yet, but talking, reading through it, it says that you set up Orange County Classical Academy, is that correct?
Correct, I was the founding Executive Director to help them launch, and then I exited after they, after they launched.
Okay. In your opening remarks, you talked about building a strong partnership. Do you plan on staying to build that, or is this? I'm just trying to figure out what your role will be long term.
Sure, thank you for asking that question. So the Orange County Classical Academy was, was a vision held by their Board of Directors, their founders, and I, you know, I came along to help them make that, help them launch, make it a reality, and, and so. But that was really my only role and purpose there. My passion is, is leadership. I, you know, like you, I've served, I've been a school board member, city councilman, mayor, I, you know, I, I have a track record of, and the way that I've always served my community is through, you know, through, through true service. And so I have a real passion for community servant, community service-based leadership. I say it a couple of ways, but serving the community as, as a way to, you know, develop leadership skills and raising up young people to, to lead our community in the future. Either community or state or nation, organizations they're part of, their families. So I guess it's a long way of saying is, this is actually my, my vision that I've, that I've really developed over the last eleven years. And so, yeah, I'm a hundred percent invested, and so long as our Board of Directors will have me as their Executive Director, I will, I will be with the organization, and I'm very excited about its future.
Thank you. And then, this is my last question. You talk about service learning projects and financial literacy embedded into the, the classrooms, and you do have a large section in your notebook that I haven't read through all the details on curriculum. Is there examples of those type of lessons listed in there? Or?
Yeah, you, you would definitely find some. I will say, and I, you know, and I apologize certainly to the size of the document. It, it's kind of how things have gone with charter school petitions. And our desire, but our desire, what our desire was, was to show you is in great detail, sort of some examples of the, of the curriculum that, that, and scope and sequence, and breaking it down by grade even, and by week, showing examples of what it is that we'll be using. So I believe some of that is in there, but I'll, but also, but it's, but others will still be developed, frankly, just to be, just to be frank, right? So like, as, you know, as we move towards launch, like, the core of our school is classical education. The Franklin Covey Leader and Me program is sort of the next step. And what we'll do is, because it is new in terms of being integrated into classical leadership education, the, the financial literacy will be embedded into a lot of our conversations. Yeah, but I think you probably won't see a lot of it in that, in those attachments.
Okay, is that something you guys could maybe, like, email me? Additional, like, lessons, maybe for different grade levels? Not every grade level.
For sure.
Just samples.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I have a few questions for you. My first is, your district facility in, in Capo Unified, is that a school, a Capo District facility? Or is that something that you're leasing?
Well, it's both. We're leasing it from Capistrano Unified School District.
So they're providing the space, the facilities?
Correct, correct. That's, and I will say, like, that, that is, that is not our first choice here, and we hope, we hope that, you know, the Prop thirty-nine provides a process by which residents of a community can say, if my kids go to the charter school, of a community can say, "If my kids go to the charter school, we, you know, they deserve to have access to facilities too." And so, Prop Thirty-Nine provides a process to do that, and, but I will say that we're actively looking for private facilities, that'd be our preference, for sure, but facilities are hard to find.
So the three-hundred-and-forty-some students that you currently have slated that could start here, are you planning on using Placentia Yorba Linda facilities?
It's possible, but that's not our, that's not our first choice. Our first choice would be to have, to have our own private facility, which, you know, we, which we, you know, have identified, at least one option. You know, it's, it's, the thing about-
Sorry, go ahead.
The way charter schools have to get into facilities is that, you know, no, no one will sign a lease with us until we have an approved charter petition, and so that starts the process, so. But, no, I mean, I think our preference would be to be in a, in a private facility, however, you know, it's, it's very, Prop Thirty, Prop Thirty-Nine would not be our first choice, but it would be an option if we can, if we're not successful finding a private facility.
So if this is approved, and you do not find a private facility, you will be looking for space at PylUSD schools?
Yeah, that's possible, yeah. Not our first choice, but that's possible.
I get that. You asked the same question I had about Placentia Yorba Linda students, so, and you said that was approximately how many?
Approximately forty-eight students and thirty-five residents.
So the facility that you're looking for, for almost three-hundred-and-forty students, forty-eight of which seem to be in our district, will that hold, the, the, the facility that you're currently looking at, that's in our district, that's not a district facility, will that hold three-hundred-and-forty students?
Yes.
And will it hold all of the students that you're expecting to grow into over the next few years, all the way up to eighth grade?
Yes, we believe it would. And even, you know, and even our San Juan Capistrano location, we, we think that's a temporary solution. I mean, our, our objective is to, you know, I think it's important that we move towards our own facility.
So are you currently now fiscally solvent?
Yeah, yeah, you'll, when you get, yeah, the answer is yes, but I mean, fiscally solvent in our budget year, so. Our budget balances in year one, that's a good thing, we think. But the way, and, you know, I don't, I hope, I hope this doesn't, you probably already know this, I'll just say that, right, but the way public school funding works is that, especially in a startup environment, your, your, your public funds don't come until October, but you have to hire your staff much earlier than that, and they start much earlier than you have to outfit your school, et cetera, et cetera. So you'll see in our budget, there's a, there's a cash flow projection for how, how we're going to meet payroll and that sort of thing. Certainly at our existing school, we, you know, we have a cash flow loan from, from a financial institution, that's come through, and that's what's enabling us to meet our cash flow needs, but our budget itself balances in, in year one. Hope I didn't confuse that, I hope that made sense.
And we have to do projections for three years? Are you required to do projections, projections for three years?
Yeah, we did five years.
And, and are you balanced at the end of the three and the five years?
Yes, yeah, in fact, we're starting to really build up a pretty good reserve by the fifth year.
Just one more question that came up, sorry. You guys haven't officially done a full school year, is that correct?
No.
So you're opening up this August for your very first year?
That's correct.
I have a question. So you're looking for a facility for three-hundred-and-forty, but if you end up having to Prop Thirty-Nine us, what would the numbers be that you'd be looking for? Because I understand that if you have to go under Prop Thirty-Nine, the numbers are considered really less. And OC Classical Academy was looking without the Prop Thirty-Nine as well, and we couldn't, we couldn't hold them, we couldn't facilitate them. So is Prop Thirty-Nine even, is Prop Thirty-Nine even an option, knowing the space that we couldn't even hold, we couldn't even, you know, have the Classical Academy?
The way, the way Prop Thirty-Nine works is you're, you're only required to house the students that live within your school district boundary, so what, and it's a, and it's a separate signature process, different than the charter school, than the charter petitioning process. So what we would, what we would do, if we're not able to secure the private facility, is we would gather signatures, and, and then, and then it starts a negotiation with, with you all, but it really comes down to how many Placentia Yorba Linda students sign our petition. That's kind of the, that's kind of the starting point. Another, so, in that, in other words, and so that's what we're doing, that's what we did in, in San Juan Capistrano, and the number of signatures we got for Prop Thirty-Nine was, was less than the original projections of enrollment. So in other words, like, the facility we have has constricted our ability to, constricted the size of our school. So we're starting at two-hundred-and-twenty-two students down there, instead of the three-hundred-and, you know, fifty, but, but we're okay with that. We, if we get into a private facility, we would love to start with a bigger number, but, you know, I think, one thing about being in charter school world is, we sort of have to be flexible.
So you're saying, if, if you had to go the Prop Thirty-Nine option, you'd be willing to only go with the forty-eight students in our district and use our facilities, or would you just try to look elsewhere?
We, we would initiate a signature gathering process and get as many as we can in order to have a conversation with you all. So I don't, I don't, you know, that number will be, so a lot of, a lot of the homeschool family, still, anyway, the number, the number will be whatever it is we're able to secure by November first and turn into the district. I don't, I don't know what that number would be.
Okay, thank you. So November first, if we, if this was denied and you chose to go Prop Thirty-Nine route, or, I guess, if it's denied, it wouldn't make any difference. So, but if it was approved, then, and you chose to go through the Prop Thirty-Nine route, then by November, you would have to provide us with a list of names and numbers?
Correct.
And if we denied this, this application, what's the next step?
We actually have on the call this evening Marley counsel for us, and so, the board would like to pose that question to her, she could, she could respond to that.
I can actually answer that question, there's an appeal process to the county.
That's, hi, it's Marley Fox, that's correct.
I have no further questions at this time.
I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to a charter school, you know, in, in our community. However, I just want us to be realistic, like, when you talk about the partnerships, I mean, obviously, this is a school that is separate from our district, and so we would just be basically approving an application for them to be opening a school in our community, but we would be running completely separate. And I just also think that we have to, Orange County Classical Academy tried to come in with a very high number, and we couldn't accommodate that. So I really hope that everyone doesn't go into a freak-out mode about, because, you know, we've had a lot of partnerships and stuff, talk, but from my understanding is, Dr. Turnus wouldn't this be, is that if this was to go through, if they found their own space, we are still running separate from what they are running. There's no part, like, the partnership of professional development, that would have to be, that's really not something that happens.
No, I mean, there's always options for the district to partner with schools that are, you know, not part of our district, but there'd be no, you know, initial plans or obligations or expectations to do that. We want to do what's best for our district and our students, so if there are partnerships that benefit us, great, but we'd have to make those decisions.
Can I ask one more question? That just brought up a, a question that popped into my head. Currently at, in Capo Unified, are you sharing space with another school, or do you have your own building?
It's a, it's a unique situation. It's, it's a, called a co-location, so it is a shared space with another elementary school, but it's, it's separate, too. Like, we're, it's a, it's a standalone building that is separate from the rest of the school campus, and we have our own parking lot and play, you know, play area and that sort of thing. But it is technically co-located with another elementary school.
Do you share the playgrounds, or do you alternate playgrounds, alternate library, alternate computer, alternate lunch tables, all of that?
Yeah, a combination of those things. So we have our own lunch tables, we have our own grass play area, but we will be sharing, and we'll have our own TK play equipment that we'll bring in, but we'll be sharing the kindergarten play equipment, the older kid play equipment, but not at the same time. So we've coordinated our, our recess calendars with the principal of that, their school, and, so that we're, yeah, so that, so that we're each out there at different times. And, and the way, you know, and, yeah, so, and, and the other thing we're doing with Capistrano Unified is we're, you know, we're part, I want to say partnering, but we're, we're, we're going to be purchasing food from them for our students, so through the, you know, meal program, we're going to be contracting with the school district for their meal services.
This question is for you, Mr. Giordano. With a charter school, what kind of responsibilities are then the districts? If, if we allow them in here, do we have, like, oversight of anything, or what, what is then our responsibilities?
Yeah, they're, they're definitely oversight responsibilities, and one of the things that, that we'll be doing is going through the, the charter school petition in great detail, reviewing the educational program, the finances, anything to do with the charter is, is provided for an ed code, certain requirements that we have to review, and we'll post that review, I think it's fourteen days prior to the board taking action. The board will have to take action at the August eighth meeting, based on the timeline that's provided for an ed code. But one of the things that we'll be doing in the Business Services Division is reviewing all the, all the financials, and so, we'll be looking at the cash flow statement, we'll be evaluating any loans that were included there, we'll be looking at enrollment projections, anything to do with the finances, we'll be reviewing, we'll be looking at salary information to make sure that the salary information is consistent with salaries in other districts throughout Orange County. So there's a lot of data that we'll be going through, and we'll be doing that over the course of the, the next several months, or next several weeks, excuse me.
And then, is that a continuing thing annually?
Yes, it is, and there'll be a-
So it's not just a one-time thing?
No, there'll be a, there'll be a process that we'll have to go through each year and, and monitor the financials as well, and I believe the same is true on the educational side.
Are we compensated for our oversight through the charter school? Is that part of, because we're doing a lot of work for them?
Yeah.
So I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, are we using our district resources-
Yeah, that might be a good question for, for attorney. Marley, do you happen to know whether or not-
I could tell you, yes, yeah, but, yeah, we, it's, it's, and it's built into our budget, is a one percent oversight fee.
There you go.
That's also correct.
There you go.
Is that typical?
Yes.
And is that, is that sufficient enough to cover our cost?
Yeah, that's something that, that we'll have to evaluate and see. It's very early for us to be able to say how much time will be spent evaluating the financials, but whatever's provided for an ed code is, is what we'd be entitled to. So if it's one percent, it'll be one percent is what we get.
So it's an ed code entitlement?
Is that correct, Marley? Would you say that, that's provided for in an ed code?
Yeah, yes, it is, it's in the ed code. I, I unfortunately don't have my ed code with me, so I don't recall the exact section, but it is in the ed code for sure.
And that's something that you, your team will be evaluating as well, is that correct?
That, that's-
And from ed services and the business side, to make sure?
That's-
Yes, we're, staff's evaluating all, all aspects of the application, and we are getting guidance from council.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Does any of that oversight change if they're in our facility or not, versus not in our facility? Does any of that change?
Yeah, it's depending on the, well, it's really depending on, on the approval. Who approves the actual charter petition would determine who is responsible for the oversight, and so if our board took action on August eighth and approved, it would be our responsibility, correct?
Our facility or not. So if they have their own location off, and really nothing to do with us, we, you know, never, we never see you guys, we still have to oversight that, but then if, if the appeal goes through, then OC Board of Education would, if they approve that appeal, then they are the oversight. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's, it's who is the authorizer, whether it's the district authorizing or the county.
So if the district denies, but the county approves, then the oversight moves to the county?
Yes.
Who is oversight of the current contract with Capo? The county or Capo?
Yeah, we, so, we were approved five oh by the Orange County Board of Education, so we, at, at San Juan Capistrano, it was a split vote, so there was a motion to approve us, and it was, it failed because it didn't have a fourth vote, there was a motion to deny us, and it failed because it didn't have a fourth vote, so technically, they took no action. And, so we went on appeal to the Orange County Board, and, and, yeah, like I said, it was approved five zero.
So if Orange County Board of Education approved it, and you're applying for Prop Thirty-Nine facilities, who approves the facility space or not? Or who gives you the okay that we have space or not? Would that be our call, or would that be Orange County Board of Education?
No, that would be you, that would be, that would be the school district. So, so, we're using, for the other school, we're using a, a Capistrano Unified School District facility, and our agreement, our facility use agreement is with the school district, and, and we, yeah, we make a lease payment as well, that goes along with that.
I'm really glad that we're asking all these questions, because there's so much disinformation that goes on, and so I'm glad that everybody's able to hear all of that, is the, the workings and what happens if we accept or not, and if you're in a facility in our district or not. I really appreciate this conversation, because I think that this is educating our community what a role a charter school actually plays. So thank you so much.
I just want to clarify, if, if we have numbers from you, and you don't, you haven't secured a location yet, and you can't secure a location until it's either approved or denied, you can't sign a lease, so it seems to me like we're sort of in a holding pattern. If you're approved, then you're going, then you potentially could look, but potentially could end up here. If we deny, it, I just, it's almost the cart, cart before the horse, like, finding the location and not expecting to use our facilities when you don't have that yet, it just, I'm a bit concerned about that.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, you know, it's the unfortunate, well, it's the unfortunate side of the charter, you know, from my perspective, our perspective, it's unfortunate side of the charter school approval process, right? As, as a school district, you know, you have a right to, 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 you know, take, you know, take, get this land zone, build it, and build a school. As a charter school, we have to go through the entitlement process and approval process, it's different, and so, and, you know, and without a, without a school, without an approved charter school, you're not really taken serious by a landlord, so it's part of the process. I wish, I wish it were different, but it's sort of part of the process.
Did I miss, are you trying to start twenty-three, twenty-four, or are you looking twenty-four, twenty-five? And then, just from my perspective, I think one thing that we would be looking for, if there's anything like this to happen, would be something that's mutually beneficial. I think that, I, I like what you stand for, I think this is all very important stuff. However, we have a district that we need to make sure we are able to support, and if we have oversight and things that we have to deal with, that has to work within our district, continuing to strive, thrive, and, and make advances in what we've been doing. So that's my concern, is that making sure that there's a mutual benefit that would be advantageous to us, more than just saying, "We know that there's a good charter in the district."
Okay, anything else? All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Davis, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, I look forward to seeing you in person in August.
No worries. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing, it'll be relative to the petition to establish a TK through a charter school for a five-year term, beginning in twenty-twenty-four through twenty-twenty-five school year, submitted by the California Republic Leadership Academy, or CRL. We're going to go ahead and open this meet, hearing at eighteen fifty-nine. Okay, as it stands right now, I have, it's like I have ten speakers that would like to speak on this, so I'm going to go ahead and call the first four to come speak. Heidi Cesseneros, Dyla Ternia, Camille Bolden, Shanny Murray. Heidi, you'll be first, the center, center podium, please. Heidi, you'll be first. The center, center podium, please.
Evening. I was hoping not to be first, but welcome. Good evening, board members, superintendent, cabinet. My name's Heidi Cisneros. I'm a parent in the district. You may remember, you may remember my comments previously that I am a super fan of the district, and I really believe that what we have going here in this district is, is the best in the county. We do rank at the top. And that's why we don't want our district to be separated and divided up. We want to continue the unity. Both of my sons went to schools that were not in our housing district, or if you will, because we had choices. We had permits that we applied for, and we went to the school of our choice. So if parents are frustrated, there are choices in this district. You can go to other schools and take part in all the fabulous programs that all the schools offer. If we want programs with more parent choice, then let's look at community schools. That's the latest and greatest model that's out there, that is literally run by parent voice. Parents make and run the school through a board process. Once you approve a charter school under your, under your district's jurisdiction, if you will, you actually give away your power. Because once they're established, whatever they do that may make, let's say, parents upset, or parents disagree with, the parents will come to your board meetings for hours. I clocked at least 20 in my career, listening to parents of schools that we had no jurisdiction over, even though we gave them the charter, complaining about what they didn't like at the charter school, because there is no more jurisdiction once that charter's given. If it belongs to another jurisdiction, then you can say it's not ours. But either way, you have no power. So we don't want to bring in something that we cannot manage. The other thing is, only one in six charter schools nationally is performing. We don't have data on this school because they haven't actually had a full school year. So what do we actually know? What we do know is you have the highest benchmarks in graduation and test scores, again, throughout the county. But what happens when a new district or a new charter comes to town is many of the top performers want to go there because it's new and exciting, right? And then you also have students who struggle. But what happens is right before testing, or when there are behavior issues, all those students get dropped. And so then they become scores on your, on your score sheets, even though you weren't the district of instruction for the past year. This is especially true for high school, even though I know they're not high school, but it matters for eighth grade as well. So of course charter schools are always open and welcoming until, until a student doesn't fit in, doesn't do exactly what goes on. We know in this district, when there are behavior issues, there's a continuous process of interventions and supports to redirect behavior. Will that occur in the charter school? Last thing is, every child's $10,000. Those homeschool kids on their list, those are homeschool kids where the ADA comes to you. Those are your homeschool kids. So let's think about where that funding goes and keep the funding for all the students. Let's keep us strong, let's keep us the best.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Dayla?
No, she's, she's out.
She's out to leave, okay. Camille?
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent and School Board. First, I'd like to commend the board for some very good questions. My background is a retired district administrator for a large school district here in Orange County. And during my tenure there, which was 16 years, I did have a chance to review a lot of charter school petitions and from the risk management standpoint. And there's a couple of things that I wanted to point out, probably to the public more than the board. You guys have the petition in front of you, but a lot of the things that is in the petition, they don't actually go to operations and risk management and liability. One of the areas that I would review was always recruitment for the, you know, proposed teachers. I have a little bit of a concern that the charter that was presented seems to be saying they're going to have teachers who signed the petition. When you look at things like the benefits that they would be giving the proposed teachers, they were nowhere near the benefit levels of other school districts. And I think the public needs to know that a lot, what, the main thing that you're going to lose is the infrastructure of the district. The district has a lot of infrastructure in place. It has support services, it has mental health, it has training, it has professional development, it has a strong risk management department that's looking at, you know, workers' comp and liability. The idea about sharing a playground with other students, if you were to share a facility, is very naive. Now your principal has to decide when their kindergarten students are going to be there versus the other students. If there's something that happens on that playground, because it does belong to the district if you're going to share a facility, then when you get a lawsuit, if somebody gets hurt on the playground, you will get sued. Even if you, you have an additional insured endorsement naming the district as an additional insured, you will be surely placed in the lawsuit. And one of the reasons is, is because it's your equipment. So even though you share, that's even a more, higher level of liability for the district if you share a facility. Emergency management is a whole other thing. I would suggest that you talk to another district or districts that have charter schools and actually talk about operations. Because you will lose a lot of, those students who are in the, in the other school, you don't control them anymore. So you can't train them, you can't make sure there's the same protocols as your district has. I see you have Raptor on the agenda, I see you have Lock Blocks. So the district is doing a lot of things for emergency management. Looks like you're putting in protocols and procedures. They wouldn't even have the same comprehensive school safety plan your district has. So infrastructure is totally lost. Everything that the district has in place is not there for the students who join that charter school. So I would look at things that aren't in the charter school petition, because there's very few real, you know, operational elements in that petition.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Murray?
Hi, thank you. So this has been very informative, and I appreciate it, but I still feel the lack of transparency on charter proposals is very concerning. I sent out a petition on May 3 asking PYLUSD to prioritize our students and keep us informed, and more than 1,100 people signed it. Now I'm finding out that the district waited until school was out for summer to inform us about the 600-page charter petition received back in April. Todd Frazier, you agreed with me in an email that on this topic transparency is important, so I hope you share my concerns. Also, although the California Republic Leadership Academy hasn't yet requested district facilities, I think it was made clear tonight that it's only a matter of time. So please, don't open the door to unnecessary charter schools coming in and taking precious resources from our students. Please prioritize PYL students. Thank you.
Next up, Jonathan Dawson, Ella Rainier, Glenn Rainier, and Karen Cheney.
You guys have to hear a lot of these. It's like 30 minutes. Well, I guess I'm not going to sound as eloquent as everyone else and have all my paperwork ready, but I just wanted to speak as maybe a success story of a school like this with a mission statement like that. I wouldn't say I was a member of public school, and I wasn't a failure of public school, but I struggled. I struggled a lot through schooling, especially as I got older. I really struggled, so much to the point where I got a letter from the district saying, hey, like, you're not going to graduate. You're, you're, you're going to fail. You're not, you're not going to be able to succeed, is what I took it as. And I attended a school that had the same mission statement, similar ideas. It was a leadership academy. And I attended the school as kind of a dejected kid. I was pretty sure I was going to live with my parents for the rest of my life. I didn't think college was an option. I didn't think anything like that was, was going to be attainable for me. And this leadership academy, again, it's not the same thing, obviously, but had very similar mission statement. It transformed to me as a student. Not that I was a failure of the district, but it transformed me and gave me new opportunities. It helped create a shift in me, recognizing the potential that I had as a student. So much so that, that just in a couple of short years, I went from, again, being dejected, getting a letter saying I was going to fail, like, hey, this is going to board meetings, like, things like this, to where I was able to go to college, and graduated from college, and then went back and got my master's degree, and just recently graduated with my master's degree. And I'm a teacher myself. I teach math to junior high students. And I went from, like, man, I hate school, I hate everything, I hate life, I hate myself. Like, I went from that place, but it was this school, this leadership academy, that brought out these things in me that I didn't realize were there, and totally put my life on another path, to something that is so much different than I ever thought. Now I have this opportunity to pour into kids and, and really just love and care for these students to come into my classroom. So, again, sorry, it's not as eloquent, and I saved you 58 seconds, but, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ella?
Um, I want, I want this school because-
Yeah, so my name is Glenn Rainier. I'm, you know, but I'm disabled, I'm hard of hearing. So I grew up in Yobolinda, California, and you know what the great thing that Potentia Linda did for me? They didn't worry about, they did a partnership with Point of Park District. They sent me on a bus for 10 years to go to, to go to the death school. So you have to understand that this is a program, this is a program that you guys can put back to the kids. And so a lot of people say it's about taking money away from the kids. Actually, the money goes to the kids, you all know that, right? There is no denying that. Whether everybody wants, else wants to say that it's going, it's getting taken away from you. It's not. Think about it. It goes straight to the kids, and that's the whole purpose. So the program that she's running, my wife is running, it's for the kids, it's not, it's not a one-size-fits-all. So you have to have multiple programs to benefit those kids. So I just want to thank you all for your time, and thank you. It's okay, just tell your Ella. Go ahead. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
It's okay. Thank you.
It's okay. Thank you very much. Karen Cheney?
I hope you all didn't look at my name and like, oh, gosh, Karen, right?
No, no.
Okay.
You're good. You're good.
I'm just, I'm a parent. I have three boys, two that have two different total needs. So my oldest is autistic, and he falls in the moderate range. And to be honest, there isn't a lot of programs and options for him. So he falls in the mild mod program and gets lost, and then he goes back to the severe program, gets lost, right? My second son, which I'm here for, is, you know, he was a part of Rose Drive Elementary Special Date Class, moved to an actual neurotypical program. There are kids in there, there was 30 kids. He regressed. He, he wasn't himself anymore. He couldn't express himself. He just felt like he, you know, all the other kids are just talking, 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 and he just regressed. And so I pulled him out. And there isn't a lot of options for kids that just can't perform in big classrooms and need more attention, more redirection. I did observations. I saw it myself. I did, he was there for a year. I did all three of my observations. I saw the regression. I saw the explosiveness in the small classroom, how he excelled, and which is why they wanted to put him in a big classroom. And that's where he regressed. So with the charter school, I know classes are smaller, kids, you know, have more opportunities to express themselves. I see my oldest son loves school. He loves going to be, being in the district in a bigger class. My little one, he just thrives in smaller groups, and I have him in other activities that are smaller group-based. And I hear, hear a lot of money talk. Everything's about money. I know that. But also, everything's about our kids, and what is best for our children. And my little guy is only six, and to see him not want to go to school because he doesn't have friends or can't excel, and then I see him see those things in a smaller group, there's a little bit of an issue. So I just say, if you have children, think about what is best for your children. And I'll tell you, if, if this doesn't get approved, he's not coming to the district. I will find elsewhere. So at least he's coming into placenta, if you guys start a charter school. So no matter what, if you're a good parent and you really want best for your child, you're going to go elsewhere. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Randy Wolstrom, John Quackenbush, Quackenbush, and Rod Ameris. I think that's his name.
Hello, my name's Randy Wolstrom, and I've been in the community for about 20 years. And one of the things that I know that you've been a great community, and it's been great. But I do believe a charter will add to you, because there's kids that get missed in the gaps. There's no way that you can catch all of them. Having been a foster brother, I have 55 foster brothers, I've run a foster program, I know that those that succeeded were those that had the charter, or had a private school, or had that advantage where they could get the extra. Having just helped three boys graduate, it was because they had a special charter program that they were able to do it. The one boy that went back to a public school system because of high functioning autism, he got lost, became angry, upset, and then he came back to us, and because he got back into the program, he graduated. There's just some things that can be offered and added, because there's just some kids that you can't all cover and we can't all reach. And so I think it'd be a great benefit that you have this. Thank you.
John, if you would, say your last name for me.
Sure. Quackenbush.
Perfect.
Good evening, distinguished board members, and thank you for your time. I'll just start off with, I request a no vote on the charter school. Many of the reasons have been already stated about our resources and things that have been really good. I do want to also bring up that many of the things they listed that they're going to provide, we provide. We provide leadership. I've seen many of our students be leaders. You guys have all seen them. How many times have students gotten up here over the last three years to talk, to speak their mind about what they feel about what's going on in this district? That is the leadership that we have provided in the school, in our schools. We provide these things. We, I'm on the, this past year was on the Access and Inclusion Committee. It was a great committee, parent involvement. We had admin, parents, everybody coming together to talk, figure out ways to help those, and to keep improving our school district. We realize we can't get everybody, but I can tell you, the school district and these parents, your administration, your teachers, all worked to try and get that last one. But it, so, let's see, what else? I'm going to take a, a chance at this. How many people here are actually not for the charter school, if you'd stand up?
Excuse me, you're addressing the board.
Oh, sorry.
This is not for the community.
Can I, can, well, then, maybe, sorry, my apologies on that. Maybe think about that also. Maybe think about, they had a chance to have who was here for it stand up. Maybe those that didn't stand up are not for it. So maybe keep that in mind. My apologies again on, on that. And, so, let's, and I'm just going to reiterate resources. You know, it will take away resources, which will not, which may not give us that ability to reach those kids we're trying to reach, and to provide that IB program, that AP program, all that leadership that we move these kids up to colleges. It's a great school district, and I'm afraid that something like this will be detrimental to our school district. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Rod Amari. Thank you to the board for the time to speak tonight. I've been a resident of this district for 20 years. I was going to initially ask those that live in the area to stand up, but I know now that's not allowed, so I will not do that.
Thank you.
I moved into this district specifically for the quality of the education in the PYLUSD district. I lived out in another district that was close, and we came here for the education. I told my realto to find a house in this district. I've had two kids go through K through 12 in this district. I currently- I currently have a sophomore or a junior at Eldorado. We've had a great experience. I chose this district specifically for its reputation, the quality and the commitment of their teachers, like Judy Rayberg, and the high caliber of the schools, K through high school. I am completely against allowing a charter school to come into the area, displace current PYLUSD students, and then utilize our facilities. My tax dollars shouldn't be used to fund a charter school, in my opinion. People are free to choose a charter school. People are free to choose where their kids go to, uh, go to school. There are plenty of great alternatives in the area that are private schools. And if they, uh, don't wanna have their kids go to public schools here, they can choose those schools. Um, taking space away from schools that are already stretched thin makes no sense. Why not have this charter school in Capo Valley function for a year and come back and report before we, uh, you guys approve giving them space? And I, I just don't like them coming in and trying to repurpose our facilities with no facilities currently lined up. The thought of maybe requesting facilities makes no sense. And I think the ultimate goal here is for the charter school to eventually use PYLUSD facilities. I'm against this proposal that involves displacing any, any student or using our facilities in any way. That's not how I want my tax dollars spent. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, everyone. Uh, it looks like the end of our, uh, meeting for pub, public hearing on the charter school.
Can I ask just a question?
Yes, ma'am.
We're supposed to be determining if the community interest is, um, in support or not. I would like to see the community in support of it, stand up. So, if those of you are in support, please stand up. In support of a charter? Thank you, please sit down. Thank you, please sit down. And those of you who are against the charter, could you please stand up? Thank you very much.
Okay, guys.
Please keep your comments down. This is our meeting.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close, uh, public hearing at nineteen twenty-two. Okay, we have a, uh, second public hearing. Uh, this public hearing, I'm gonna go ahead and turn over to, uh, Ms. Renee Gray. Thank you.
Good evening, President Youngblood, trustees, superintendent Chernus, and executive cabinet. For the public hearing this evening, the local plan, which includes the annual budget and service plan for the Northeast Orange County Selpa, is being presented on the board agenda this evening for your review. Under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, known as IDEA, each special education local plan area, otherwise known as Selpa, must ensure a continuum of program options and services are available to meet the needs of students with disabilities for special education and related services. The California Department of Education has established guidelines for the coordinated development and submission of the special education local plan. This local plan is updated and submitted annually with the following components: contacts and certifications, an annual budget plan, and an annual service plan. The substantive governance section is only reviewed on a triennial basis, and the next approval cycle will be in June twenty twenty-four. The budget portion of the plan identifies expect, expected expenditures of all items, which include funds received, administration costs of the plan, special education services to pupils with severe disabilities and low incidence disabilities and non-severe disabilities, supplemental aids and services, and regionalized operations and services and direct instructional support. The service portion of the plan requires the Selpa to delineate the program options by the nature of services, which includes the continuum offered by the Selpa, as well as the physical location at which the services will be provided, which also includes Brea. So, the Northeast Orange County Selpa Local Plan is being presented this evening for your review.
Okay, uh, so, this is a public hearing. It's relative to the annual budget and service plan of the Northeast Orange County SEPLA for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. So, I'm gonna go ahead and declare this public hearing be open at nineteen twenty-five. Is there anyone that wishes to speak regarding this, this SEPLA? Any comments from our board? Okay. In that case, I'm gonna go ahead and close this meeting at, close the hearing, sorry. I like the meeting, I like the meeting better. Darn it. Tried to slip that one past, but that didn't work. At, uh, nineteen twenty-six, nineteen twenty-six. All right, excellent. Um, okay, so, we will not have a student board report as our student board member Preston Bang is ill. He's not feeling well tonight. Uh, in his email, however, uh, he said, "I am grateful to have been selected as a stu, school board member this semester and sat amongst such a dedicated board. Please thank the rest of the board on my behalf." Uh, this would be Preston's last board meeting, and at this time, um, we would have presented Preston with a plaque, uh, which we will, um, ensure that he receives, so we'll mail it to him. Did anyone wanna say some nice things about Preston?
I, I hope he's watching at home. Uh, we really enjoyed having him here this year, and I'm very interested in having him contact us later, find out what's happening when he's off in school and how things are going, so. Wish he was here with us tonight, but I'm sure that it was a wonderful graduation, and he's happy to be done.
Yeah, I hope Preston's watching tonight. We're just so grateful for him for stepping up and representing the students of our district, and he looked very happy at graduation. Mr. Youngblood got to shake his hand. I was on the opposite side, but I was cheering when I heard his name, so. Best of luck to you, Preston, in your next adventures.
I think it's just cool that we have, uh, student board, student board members on the board and the opportunity to meet them and them to get, uh, taste for what this is like. I think Preston, well, he's very articulate, and every time he gave a board report and answered the questions that you gave to him, then I'm like, he got a, good luck, Preston. Uh, he had great answers and, uh, no, I think, I think he's gonna do well. So, Preston, good luck.
Sometimes it's nice when three people go before you, 'cause they've said everything I wanted to say, so good luck, Preston, and we wish you well, and please come back and visit.
Uh, I was gonna say some of the same things, however, I, you know, why is it that, uh, of all the student board members that we've had, they forget to call or write? You know, they get out in the real world and they decide they're not gonna contact us.
It takes a few years. They eventually do.
All right, well, I'm looking forward to that. Preston, good luck to you. I, uh, I am sure you're gonna have a very bright future. Thank you. Uh, this point, you can clap. Uh, at this point, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, hear, hear our superintendent's report, so Dr. Chernus, if you would.
Thank you, President Youngblood, members of the board. Uh, we had a great graduation week. Uh, we graduated over two thousand kids. It was just, uh, amazing to see our students, um, at all of our schools, um, our comprehensive high schools, to see our graduates from George Key, to, to see our graduates from El Camino, uh, from, from, from Parkview to, um, our, our, uh, Buena Vista. It was just really nice to see all of, um, our grads and the work they did. So, special thanks to all of our team members that helped make that happen, from our administrators and our principals, to our facilities teams, to everybody in between. It took a lot of work. We had readers that were, you know, studying hard to make sure the names were right. We had, um, uh, volunteers. We had so many people, um, to make this a special event for our, for our students, and it really was, and so, um, just a, a great time of year to celebrate our students. Now it's summertime, and we have a lot of programs about to start. So, we have our, um, our expanded learning programs, um, we have our enrichment, we have our camps, we have, um, our credit recovery programs for our kids that, you know, need to get, um, need to get credit for courses that they didn't pass, um, during the year. Uh, so, it's a really important time. We have a lot of administrators still working and principals, and everybody's gearing up this week, so, special thanks to everyone getting ready for the students. And then, as far as projects go, we're still working on opening two preschools, so we're working very hard to open Wagner and to open, uh, Bryant Ranch in the fall. Um, and we have several other preschools, and it speaks to wanting to, to grow, expand our enrollment. And so, with that, I'm excited to announce tonight that we are bringing to this district, the opportunity to enroll students who are grandchildren of residents of Placentia Yorba Linda. Our grandparents in this community, many have had kids go through the schools. Our grandparents in this community pay taxes in this community. And so, moving forward, if you are a grandparent and a resident in our district and you want your grandchildren to go to our schools, we have now added you to the priority for an inter-district permit. And so, what that means is, if your grandchildren don't live in our district boundaries, we can still enroll them on a grandparent permit. And this is another way to continue to build our district, to, to grow our enrollment, and to, um, keep our school community strong. So, really excited for that provision. Um, it'll be added to, uh, AR five-one-one-nine-point-two. Uh, again, this'll be our grandparent permit. And with that, that concludes my report.
Excellent. What a, what a great thing, grandparent program. Nice.
I think that was one of the things I was excited about when we went through the interview process with you, and you mentioned that you had that, um, in your former district, so I'm glad that we're moving forward.
Very good. Okay, um, at this point, this will be public comment. It's an opportunity for the public to provide input to the Board of Education. During the public comment period, board members do not dialogue with the speakers or make comments regarding the information shared. Looks like we have twenty? One moment. Okay, it looks like we have seventeen speakers, which means, uh, we will be given a minute and a half for speaking. I asked the speakers to repeat their names once they, once they come up to, uh, the podium, uh, and I will be calling the first four speakers, and, um, the three that aren't speaking can sit up in the front. Don't be, don't be scared, so. Looks like our first one will be Ms., uh, Haley. Is that, uh, Yenville? Bellville. Uh, Catherine Masick. Brooke Alrich. And, it looks like Leah Lazarus? Lillian. Lillian Lazarus. Thank you. So Haley will be the first.
Hi, my name is Haley Bellville, and I am a taxpayer voter resident and graduate of Eldorado High School. I'm here today in support of Eldorado employee Judy Rayberg. I was never an employee, or I was, I never had Mrs. Rayberg as a teacher. And to be honest, of the six teachers that I had, of the six science classes that I took of my four years at Eldorado High School, I don't know that any would have responded to the question that Mrs. Rayberg was asked in the same way. I believe that I would have been told to Google it or merely shamed and punished for expressing any curiosity. And yet, none of those teachers that I had at Eldorado have I learned more from than Judy Rayberg. Both of these lead to some questions. Why? What makes Mrs. Rayberg different? The answer to both is the same. Mrs. Rayberg is an educator beyond a job title and beyond a classroom. Mrs. Rayberg is an educator in her spirit and in her heart. This is why she spends her weekends and summers leading students and community members on nature trails, both in person and virtually. And this is why, when asked about the place of pleasure of physiological response in reproductive and sexual systems, she answered honestly and thoughtfully with no more graphic detail than the Wikipedia page for prostate, which is accessible by any student in the library or computer lab.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name's Catherine Masick. I just graduated from Eldorado High School last Wednesday, and I will be going to UC Riverside in the fall on a full ride scholarship, majoring in biology. I've been able to do this because of the amazing science teachers I've had in my time going to school in this district. This year, I took Miss Rayberg's anatomy class, and that consisted of juniors and seniors. This teacher has always made class in an open forum for us to ask questions that we were confused about on the curriculum. This followed in suit with our final unit, the reproductive system, where we're able to ask questions anonymously and have them answered by a professional. We ask questions we're too scared or nervous to ask other trusted adults in our lives face-to-face. And we were able, we were able to ask them in a professional setting. They, we knew the answers we would get would be truthful, unlike Google, and we knew they're anonymous, so we're not judged for asking them. I don't think a teacher should be disciplined for creating an open setting in their classroom and giving kids a safe place to ask questions, uh, when they are afraid otherwise. It is a common thing to imagine being in a person's shoes, and I think we all need to imagine how it feels to be in Judy Rayberg's shoes right now. She asked a question that was, she answered a question that was asked by a student, and it led to this possibility. Wouldn't you be crushed? I know I would, and I hope you can all see how she was just doing her job. Furthermore, I don't believe Miss Rayberg's twenty-year career should be thrown out because of a one-minute video clip that has been taken out of context online. I'm pleading, I'm pleading for you to look at every angle of this situation. Thank you for listening and letting me speak.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brooke Alrich. I'm a recent graduate of Eldorado High School. I'm here today to advocate for Mrs. Rayberg, an absolutely beloved teacher by both students and faculty alike at Eldorado. She has recently been thrown into controversy over the reproductive unit that she taught this past school year in her elective anatomy course. A unit taught in June that both students and parents in her class were made aware of in August. If you're interested, I have a printed syllabus, um, for the class, which was to be shown to parents by the students at the beginning of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. This syllabus, similar to all the other syllabi I have personally received during my years of schooling, requires a signature by both the student and the parent if the student's under eighteen. This simply means that parents were made aware of the content that this class covers and went as far as providing signed consent for their students to partake in each unit, including the reproductive unit. All I am trying to say is that it may be worth a deeper look into the content of a year-long course that the students and parents were made perfectly aware of and consented to before a minute-long video clip costs a wonderful teacher more of her livelihood than has already been taken. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lillian Lazarus. I am here to speak to you for the people who cannot at this current moment about the incident with Miss Rayberg. I worry for the future of the students that were put under the jurisdiction of this board. I too attended high school in the district and have had teachers practice disgusting misconduct towards students, yet their cases go unpunished. Incidents of teachers calling students slurs and making comments, creating unsafe and hostile environments, have been reported, that were met with a conversation and nothing more. You should be ashamed to call yourself the district that feeds into this witch hunt, demanding to terminate Miss Rayberg. This woman has been doxxed, sent death threats, and called disgusting things. I hope that doesn't just weigh on the conscience of the individuals committing the act, but every person not in her corner. And to conclude my time today, I would like to add that I will love to insist, assist her in the pursuit of a wrongful termination lawsuit in the case that the corruption that this board is built on succeeds in this witch hunt. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Uh, next up, Brian Dutton. Dr. Nancy Watkins. Sarah Phillips. And Ms. Linda Mannion.
I'm speaking to you today in support of Judy Rayberg. As you are well aware, uh, she is, uh, you've probably received a lot of angry emails, both from people here and from people across the country, as this has become kind of a, a firestorm, if you will, uh, in the media. I hope you've also realized that the people who are most angry about this are the people furthest from the situation. furthest from the situation, as evidenced by the students here. But the nice thing about it is that this anger that has been directed towards this teacher only has power if you allow it to. So I implore you to do your homework on this issue, to talk to the students, the teachers, the staff. Do your homework because there is a right answer to this question about what to do. I know that standing up for a teacher in this situation isn't always the easy thing to do, but in this case, it is the right thing to do. It makes your district better and it puts your students first. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Nancy Watkins, and I'm a retired PYL Unified School District teacher and a current professor at Cal State Fullerton. One of Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People states, "Begin with the end in mind." What is the outcome or the end that this school board and superintendent are seeking with current decisions? Additional chaos and conflict? Are you actively working to destroy the culture and strength of PYL? Do you want to dismantle PYL schools and their success? Do you want property values to decline and continue to lose enrollment as people lose confidence in our district? We're witnessing an exodus of educational leaders with deep institutional knowledge and experience, leaders who are familiar with the district's history, culture, strengths, and challenges. This knowledge enables district leadership to make informed decision, leverage past success, and address persistent effectively, issues effectively. The current leadership is not chosen to learn about or understand PYL as experienced by knee-jerk, siloed decision-making, ignoring a majority of stakeholders and creating instability in the leadership of PYL. The lack of transparency and circumvention of protocol for releasing, removing, reassigning, and hiring educational leaders has thrust PYL deeper into controversy and demonstrates that the board and the superintendent's desire to push their partisan agenda instead of understanding and serving the community. Better for PYL leadership is to adopt Covey's habit, seek first to understand, then be understood. Try to understand PYL before you continue to make changes without reasoning or transparency.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, one and all. I'm Sarah Phillips, teacher librarian at Yorbalinda High School. The high school librarians have been asking for a district collection development policy and procedure for challenged books since December of 2021. We wrote a document together, and it's sitting with Ed Services. We would like to work with the district administrators on this document rather than what happened last week with the banning of two books. Was there a process followed to make that decision? The library is a free-choice space that strives to make every student feel seen in the collection while providing material for research and personal development. The materials we select are age-appropriate according to reviews and publisher accounts, but there are books that teens could take offense, but they do not have to read them. We never encourage students to read anything that they find offensive because of their values or personal beliefs. Inside the document that we wrote of our draft collection development policy, I want to read a couple excerpts from one of the documents linked in there. Children and young adults unquestionably possess First Amendment's rights, including the right to receive information through the library in a variety of formats. Constitutionally protected speech cannot be suppressed solely to protect children or young adults from ideas or images a legislative body believes to be unsuitable for them. Libraries and their governing bodies cannot assume the role of parents. Libraries and their governing bodies shall ensure that only students and guardians have the right and responsibility to determine their children, and only their children, access to library resources.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Linda Mannion, president of the Association of Placentia Linda Educators. A couple months ago, you brought the Pornofino bill to me about screening for dyslexia, and I've been working and researching that, and you were concerned that CTA hadn't supported it. Well, they didn't because the supports weren't in place, but they've been working with the governor, and now there is a very viable screening proposal as part of the May revise. And I'm going to read you the supports that are in place for it because it's something that we can all get behind. The May revision proposes to require districts to begin screening students in kindergarten through second grade for risk of reading difficulties, including dyslexia, by the 2025-2026 school year. The May revision provides $1 million in one-time Prop 98 funding to support the convening of an independent panel of experts to approve a list of screening instruments for these assessments, and the administration intends to fund professional development for this purpose in future budgets. Under the proposal, districts would be further required to provide support and services to students identified as at risk of reading difficulties, including dyslexia. The May revision maintains the proposed $250 million in one-time Prop 98 funding to build on the existing literacy coaches and reading specialist grant program, which funds high poverty schools to train and hire literacy coaches. The proposal also includes $1 million in general fund to create a literacy roadmap
Thank you, ma'am.
to help educators navigate these resources.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next four. Brent D., Michaela McHugh, Paula Powers, excuse me, and Shannie Murray.
My name is Brent. I did K through 12 in this district, and so will my children. I can't even believe the gaslighting that's continuing here about the teacher in question. The defenders of this inappropriate Eldorado Anatomy Class teacher have described her last board meeting as acting in good faith and making an honest mistake. They were attempting to frame this regrettable incident as a one-time slip-up that needs to be immediately forgiven and forgotten. And although it was a mistake, it apparently was not a one-time inappropriate classroom conversation for this teacher, since the last school board meeting has been reported to the Eldorado principal by students in the anatomy class that this same teacher allegedly spoke to the class about things she's done on the beach in Dana Point. I'm not going to repeat what it was. This was reported to me directly by a parent of one of the students in the class who was there to witness it firsthand. I am calling for an immediate investigation into this incident by the superintendent and the school board. There needs to be accountability for this type of egregious behavior.
Michaela?
Hi, everyone. My name is Michaela McHugh, and I am a specialty ICU registered nurse, as well as an Eldorado alumni. I have never been the best student growing up, until college, and especially in high school. I had Miss Rayberg in 2016 for anatomy. Go figure, I've become a nurse. I know everyone's kind of talked about her in the sense, we all know what happened. We all know that there was a syllabus and whatnot, and I can say that I also took health classes at Eldorado as a freshman, as required by everyone else, and I got less than one class period on sex education due to the male teacher's discomfort talking about the topic at the time. That being said, these kids, sorry, parents, but 60% of your high school students are sexually active, whether that's heterosexuality or homosexuality, and that's coming from the CDC. Not to mention, 95% of teenagers aged 13 to 17 have access to the media via their phones at any given moment. Miss Rayberg, again, was spreading reputable knowledge and comprehensive sex education to prevent further ignorance to anyone else. She also always discloses if anyone feels uncomfortable anytime during this part of the lecture that she will stop immediately. Wouldn't we rather have our students educated about safe sex? Students are going to ask a question. It's always going to happen. You're breaking down the walls of trust and security that Miss Rayberg has spent years building with her students. Whoever took that video took it without her consent, which is another issue we can talk about. Not to mention, I would not be an RN standing here today if it wasn't for the confidence she gave me, and that itself is irreplaceable. I implore you to please reconsider your opinions and respectfully update your policies and priorities. We cannot protect our children from everything, but we can educate them. Thank you.
Hello, Paula Powers. As I welcome Dr. Young to our board, I want to take the opportunity to share my shock in losing Dr. Adamson, a one-in-a-million leader. I'm sad Dr. Chernis will not get to work alongside one of the most knowledgeable, hard-working professionals that has been part of our PYL family for over a decade. Dr. Adamson wore many hats and met each challenge with confidence and grace. She worked tirelessly to make sure every student on our campuses had what they needed to succeed. When Dr. Adamson joined our district as a new principal at Rose Drive, teachers, parents, and students loved her immediately. Her positivity spilled over to each person she met. She even learned the name of every student on campus and greeted each child at the gate with a smile and word of encouragement for a great day of learning. After her time at Rose, we were so happy to see her move to the district office, knowing that her dedication to our kids would be forefront of every decision she made. Her ability to listen, study data, and make informed decisions guiding this district when times were tough. Dr. Adamson needed, noticed, and nurtured each member of this community. She led with her heart, which made those who worked with her respect and support her. Her smile, kind words, warm laugh, and adorable accent cannot be replaced. I cannot thank you enough for keeping our children her guiding star, listening intently to their concerns, encouraging them at every turn, and sharing their joy during promotions and graduations. I'm so sad to say goodbye to such a special leader. I wish her the very best on her next chapter.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Shannie Murray, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank all of the teachers who celebrated this month's Pride and Inclusivity theme despite the district's last-minute switch to National Safety Month. Thank you for creating a safe space for LGBTQ students, celebrating and supporting this vulnerable and targeted community. And thank you for exemplifying a message of inclusivity, which helps minimize the hatred and fear that can present a danger to our community in the first place. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Dee Lawrence Radler. Kitty Chow. Marquise Holly. And Lauren Hoffiter.
It's Radler.
Thank you.
It's time to set aside the political rhetoric, as evidenced by last week's most fiery speaker getting up here, knowing nothing about our district, our children, or our teachers, making his political statements and making a beeline for the door, as well as the vast majority of the charter school supporters. I don't even know if they're residents, but they made a beeline out of here, so I don't see them caring about our district. It's time to set it aside. Can we focus for a minute, literally, and look at the demonstrable results of Mrs. Rayberg's dedicated approach to teaching? Last meeting, we heard student after student praising her style and honest approach towards addressing very real and sensitive issues in an accurate, clinical, and yes, age-appropriate manner. Her students are not infants. Many, many of the cases, they're already legal adults. These and current, these current and former students all appear to be rational, well-adjusted, successful, critically thinking, and well-spoken young adults, not a deviant among them, despite their exposure to a teacher some are calling dangerous, perverted, and worse. It should be noted that not a single student spoke out against this beloved educator. All my children had Mrs. Rayberg, and as different as they may be from one another, they all adored her and grew up to be well-adjusted, independent, critically-thinking adults. The harm that some folks are imagining simply has not manifested itself in Mrs. Rayberg's 20-plus years of educating our children. Recall the recent words by a Florida educator. "Students don't care what you know unless they know you care." At the risk of being called a heretic for reframing Shakespeare, we should be praising this dedicated educator, not trying to bury her.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. It has come to my attention that the district has been proposing a plan which could negatively affect PYL USD schools. This proposal includes a school called the Orange County Classical Academy, or OCCA for short, and the OCCA is looking to expand its current campus in Orange into PYL USD schools. They want a portion of classrooms, shared bathrooms, shared kitchen spaces, shared play areas, and shared multipurpose rooms. The potential drawbacks of this are blatantly present. Students will lose classroom spaces and possibly be displaced from their classrooms into unsuitable learning environments. Students also face limited restroom spaces, especially for female students, whose restroom spaces are notably overcrowded and packed during break and lunchtimes. Students would also be forced to give up needed field area to children who do not belong to the district. But the most shocking truth, besides the district's lack of student awareness, is the fact that this proposal has not been made transparent to both parents and students within the district. When our families and our kids are at risk for potential introduction of students not affiliated with the district in any shape or form, we understand that the district no longer prioritizes students first. And if this plan is passed, it would go into effect the 2024-25 school year and affect Bernardo Middle School, Esperanza High, Eldorado High, and Rio Vista Elementary. So I ask that you all today press your representatives to demand complete and utter transparency with any transgressions that may take place in order to prioritize students first. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Marquise Holly, and I am the Association of Placentia Linda Educators Committee Outreach Chairperson. I just wanted to let you guys all know what we have done this year, and I have helped facilitate for our district into our community. First, starting in November, I gather different names of families and I gather different schools that would like to participate in our Adopt a Family Outreach Program. This year, we adopted 25 families, which is the most we've ever done. It involved many elementary, middle schools, and high schools. I think about sixteen different ones, so obviously many schools adopted two or more families themselves. Then the Shamrock Enroll, which as you know, or Shamrock and Run, sorry, is sponsored by the Reach Foundation. We donate a sponsorship for them, and we have a team of teachers that participate in the 2K. Last, but certainly not least, we give out an Apple Scholarship, $500 each for every high school. The qualifications that we ask for are an academic of 3.0 or more, community involvement, and that they pursue a service-oriented career. Oh, dear.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, shoot. I wanted to tell you who they were. Oh, well.
Next time. Thank you.
Hello, I am Lauren Hoffreider, and I'm also an ELDO graduate and a current biology major at Cal State Fullerton. And I was actually going to student teach for Judy Rayberg, but in light of recent events, that may not happen. However, that dream was actually interrupted last year as well because I learned that the district did ban CRT in schools. Cal State Fullerton responded by preventing student teachers from coming into this district at the same volume as they were. And if you were to discipline Judy Rayberg, it would feel like another step in a line of political decisions that have been, I feel unjustly motivated. There's a lot of statistics that sort of show that a comprehensive sexual education, that is one that includes the pleasure functions of genitals as well as just reproduction, is necessary for students' well-being and proper development and reduces the risk of pregnancy risk and STD spreading in schools. But it just sort of feels like people are more willing to listen to Greg Gutfeld and other people that can't even really define grooming over the actual members of the community and the real statistics that have shown that Judy Rayberg has done very much a good thing. Thank you.
Okay, our last speaker, Denise May.
I'm Denise May. I've never spoken, so I'm here to talk first about your civility policy. I've been here for 23 years. In the past two years, I've been called a communist, a groomer, a pedophile sitting in this audience. It's your job to make sure that we're civil. Two weeks ago, you had a man here screaming at teachers, "Stay in your lane." That's your time to say this is unacceptable. It's not civil. It does not instill safety to come to these meetings. It does not instill safety to come to these meetings or to have your name be out in the public. Next, I want to speak about Judy Rayberg. My daughter was in the class, actually in the class, not this gossip, in the class. What your swift action did was stop a year-long effort of dissecting a cat. They were down to the last minute, the brain. They didn't get to do it because you guys acted swiftly and removed her, because some people were offended by what she said. The kids in the class were not offended. Your swift action not only made the kids feel unsafe, because the safety of their classroom was breached when that video was released, you have made every teacher in the district feel unsupported and unsafe, because at any time, a student can pull out their phone and record a teacher, and you guys have now shown them that you'll remove the teacher. You did not replace Mrs. Rayberg with a qualified teacher. It was a walk-on baseball coach. So I didn't send my daughter the last two weeks. It's unacceptable. You need to support your teachers.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we're going to move on to our communication and board report.
Did you want to take a break first? Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, that's a, yeah. Let's, let's go ahead and take about five minutes.
Okay.
We'll go ahead and get our communication board report, starting with Ms. Buck. Thank you.
It's been a heck of a month, because we didn't do this since May, so I've got a lot of stuff, but I'll just kind of briefly go over it. I won't go into detail.
That's, make sure we keep it three to five minutes, please.
Yeah, you got it. Okay, so since the May board meeting, I attended the middle school track meet, which was pretty awesome. Got to go over to Yorblinda High School and see that in action again, which is always a fun day of the year. I attended the first five and the, and Orange County Conditions of Children's Report, and I forgot that, I brought you all each a hard copy, which I will drop off and make sure that gets distributed to you. But every year, the first five does a Conditions of Children's Report. It's a pretty comprehensive look at what's happening throughout Orange County, so I'll make sure and pass that along. I attended the CSBA May Revised Budget Report via Zoom, which was always very informative, and then got a little bit more of it at the OCSBA Fiscal Seminar right after that. So there's so many changes, it's good to hear it a number of times, and I always like to hear it and then come back and get David's opinion on it and where he is, because he's our great CBO. But he always seems to know even more, and so it helps me understand even beyond. I want to apologize, I missed the CSEA luncheon. I usually try to attend that every year, but it was super busy that day, and I didn't make it, so I apologize for that. I hope it was a great luncheon. The Placentia First Responders Breakfast was great, as usual, down there in the downtown of Placentia. It was nice to see everybody there and be able to recognize our first responders. I attended the Unified Track Meet at Eldorado High School, where all of our high school students got to come and, and have their track meet with lots of different activities, with the long jump and the, the different, I forget whichever one it's the running and they had six different activities that they did, but it was really, really neat to see all of the Eldorado students that had come out, and they were sitting up in the bleachers cheering on all of the students that were racing. So it was really nice. I attended the Big Band Blowout, which is the Bernardo and Esperanza Jazz Bands, and they had a special guest come. That was phenomenal at the pack, really to see the caliber that, that we can bring and, and bring and perform with the students, but they step it up, and those, the kids were just really amazing to, to perform there. So I hope that, this happens every year, I hope you get to attend it at some point, because it really is a good one. I always think about how much I like jazz, and when you actually get in there and you're hearing all of it, it's, you remember. It's nice. I attended Delegate Assembly in May, and I'll bring a report back for that. We didn't do a whole lot of any changes. We had a couple of different bylaw, bylaw adjustments, but nothing major, but I'll pass that along to you. I attended, and I can't remember the name of it, it was the coding event at Valencia High School? Yes, the App Jam. That was really neat to watch all, and I get to try all of the, the different apps that the students in middle school had designed. I didn't stay for the, the award ceremony, because I popped over to Glenview for their Spanish Dual Language Academy presentations, which were equally just as good, listening to the students answer questions in both English and Spanish. Let's see. I attended the Children and Families Commission Meeting, which is also a countywide program or countywide commission, and listened and heard about their new release of the new version of Kid Builders, which is a lot of early childhood education and programs that parents can use. And now it's, they used to have it all in book form, but now it's all online, and I did pass that along, so that we can use that maybe in our early childhood programs. I attended the ED Law End of Year Award Ceremony and for all of the seniors graduating, and what I found most nice about that, that ceremony was that all of the seniors took a pen and, and they chose one of the other students and provided them with that pen and talked about how they had made an impact on them that year, that senior year in the ED Law Program. So it's kind of like pay it forward, but it was really nice. So we also had lots of graduations and promotions, as was mentioned, and every year, Validus Promotion is the one that I make sure I get to, being that I worked at that school at one point. But I also attended the Buena Vista Virtual Academy Middle School Promotion, Parkview School, High School, and Middle School Ceremony, and very nice job on your speech, Mr. Frazier, that was great. And you had a miracle theme, and then we heard the next speech at George Key. Mrs. Anderson had a miracle theme in hers, so it was really neat to see that, too. George Key was an amazing graduation with our three students. It's just, it, it brings you to tears, and it's just amazing what those students can accomplish and that they did accomplish, and to support the families, it really is the families that are, that are graduating all together, really. And then El Camino Real High School, Eldorado, and Esperanza. It was wonderful to see all those students out there graduating, hear wonderful speeches that they give, and, and get to shake lots and lots of hands, and I am really looking forward to the Plum Luncheon this week. That's on Thursday, I believe, Thursday, so I'll be seeing some of you there. And I just want to say Happy Juneteenth to all of you from, that celebrated yesterday, and Happy Pride Month. That's all for me.
Good evening, everybody. Okay, I'm going to try to go fast, because there was a lot. I also, I attended the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast in Yorblinda, and I just wanted to say wow to Valencia High School Choir's performance. They really knocked, knocked everybody off their feet. They were so good, so of course we had to give them a standing ovation. I attended the middle school track meet, and I just want to say special thanks to the Reach Foundation and all their hard work in putting that together. I attended our CSEA luncheon, and I'm just so appreciative of our classified staff, because they really do make the learning that happens here possible. Without them, we'd be lost. I attended the Memorial Day Celebration at Valencia High School, and I'm just so grateful for the dedication of the students there, making sure that we take this moment to honor and pay tribute, and the Valencia High School Choir and Symphonic Band were also amazing, and of course, Esperanza J R O T C presented the colors, and they did a beautiful job. School visits, I got some of those in, which was kind of fun, because it was kind of during testing, so it was a little sketchy, but we made it happen. I went to Brookhaven, and in kindergarten, I learned about secret stories, and the students were having a reading day, and they kept bringing the books up and saying, "Look, right here is a secret story," and all their letter combinations, and so it was really fun. I got to see the Gaga Pits in action, so that was very exciting, and the second graders shared everything about octopi with me and their trip to the aquarium. And I love the school culture there, because the lower grades had adopted older classrooms, and they were cheering them on for their testing, and so they were showing me their signs and what they were doing to spear on the students there, so that was great. I went to Melrose, and I just love this school. It's really full of a lot of love and acceptance, and the kids were working really hard, and I really enjoyed my time talking to Principal Yu. She really is, in one short year, has learned that school, and she, and her and I were talking about a lot of the challenges there that they're facing and trying to prioritize, and I think she's, she's doing a great job there. I went to Topaz School, and I observed the best integrated ELD lesson I've ever seen there with a teacher. She was directing students on sentence structure, vocabulary expansion, and how to utilize the room to find information for the words that they were looking at. It was truly fun to see that. Also, I got to observe in person the co-taught Head Start Inclusion Program, and it was just really fun to watch it in action and see how these two teachers just integrate together. It was seamless, and I didn't get to go in the upper grade classrooms, of course, because they were doing testing. I attended a CSBA May Revised Budget from School Services, and so not a lot of good news there, which I'm sure we'll hear more about, so I'll save that for Mr. Giordano. I went to the Placentia First Responders Breakfast, and I just wanted to congratulate our, the five award recipients for this year. I went to Rio Vista. Anaheim Police Department's Mounted Unit did a presentation there, and I wanted to especially thank Anaheim City Council Member Steve Fossil for making the arrangements and inviting me to come and join him. The kids had the best time learning about the horses and the program and how they helped keep Anaheim safe. I went to also, we were busy that night, went to App Jam and tried the students' games, and the best part about this was trying to do their programs, and as one Yorblinda Middle School said, students told me, he says, "I'm not a loser, you just need more practice." So I guess I'm going to have to take up video games this summer. And I didn't stay for the winners either, because I had to run over and see the dual language showcase over at Glenview, and it was just so amazing to see these students' projects and learn all that they have done, and asking them questions in English and Spanish, and then asking another student to help translate what they said. It was just so impressive, and I can't wait to see where they go from here in middle school. I attended several senior award nights at Valencia, Eldorado, Esperanza, and again, I'm just grateful for our community partners that support our seniors and scholarships, and our students are so impressive. Their GPAs are just blow me away, and I'm just, just blown away. Let's just leave it that way. I went to the Adventure Got Talent Show, and a special thanks to Carmen Gonzalez for organizing the event, and let's just say I was really blown away by the array of talents. There was singing, tap dancing, regular dancing, cheerleading, rock band, drum line, piano playing, lip sync, and even one of the students accompanied another student on the piano while she sang, and it was just beautiful. And I look forward to seeing what they can do next year and seeing how they improve. I went to Market Day at Glen Knoll. You went to Market Day?
No, I missed it.
Oh, it was so fun. We have amazing third-grade teachers over there and third graders, and I loved all their products. I got to witness many entrepreneur skills from these young kids as they were bargaining with students to sell their products, and projects ranged from toys, school supplies, plants, musical instruments, jewelry, beauty items, original art, et cetera. And I, and I left my, my products at home, I was going to show some of them that I purchased. It was fun. I attended five graduations this year: Adventure, George Key, El Camino, Eldorado, and Valencia. And it was just so fun to be there and represent the district in celebrating our students and in all their accomplishments, and, and to see what they've been able to achieve. And I'm just, this is the best part about my job, is really celebrating with our students, and I'm grateful that I had the opportunity to do that. And lastly, I just wanted to send a special thank you to Dr. Linda Adams, who served our district faithfully for many years. She was truly dedicated to lifting staff and students so they could all reach their potential. She personally helped me to better understand the LCAP process and answering all my questions regarding the LCAP and curriculum as we prepare to adopt these for our district, and I will truly miss working with her and want to wish her all the success in her new journey.
I second that. Having her as the principal at my children's school, we had some special times together, so best of luck to Linda.
All right, so yeah, it's been a long time since we've been given a board report, so there's a lot of things to cover. I'm just going to hit some highlights. First and foremost, I was, I was invited by Ms. Paula Powers to Rose Drive to come to the, yeah, it was great. I came to the first and fourth grade kindness presentation. They have a buddy system, and this is kind of the culmination of their year, and it was just neat to see the kids kind of celebrate kindness, and, and the things that they were talking about was literally being kind, which is what we need more of in this world. I got to meet Mrs. Nappi and took a tour of the entire school, got to see several parents and grandparents of kids that were at Rose Drive that I, you know, I haven't seen for a while, so that was neat to see their kids involved. And the thing that, the theme that I saw as I went around Rose Drive is there are so many different creative ways to teach things to kids, and every classroom had something that they were doing different. I think my favorite one, no offense to any other class, but there was a writing assignment where they were using emojis, and they give the kids one emoji, and they start a story, and then a second emoji, and then they continue the story. It was like, that, thank you. That's, that's phenomenal. I love that. And the kids were sharing some of their stories in class. It's just, I love seeing kids get excited. It's a great way to get them to learn, and I think it's, it's, it's really neat to see that and actually get to experience it. I didn't get to go to the App Jam competition, but I got ahold of Mr. Kemp, and I was able to go over to Yorblinda Middle School to see the App Jam class, where the kids were preparing for that, and got to talk to the gentleman that runs it and talk to the staff. And that program, I didn't know it existed, and it's phenomenal. I love the fact that, I mean, I build apps myself. The fact that we can equip kids to have a skill, my theme throughout everything is prepare them for after-school. That's what this is all about. And this is just yet another program that we have at this district that we need to sing the praises of. It's phenomenal. I wish I could have been at the competition, that would have been a lot of fun. Then I got to, what's that? I, I don't know. Some of these kids are really smart, and I am not as smart sometimes. I got to attend the Market Day at Glen Knoll. Luckily, it was my anniversary two days later, so I got to get gifts from my wife. It was great. She loved them. She came home with a counter, "What are all these? Let me tell you." No, I just, again, it's a theme of other opportunities for kids to see, hey, I may not be great at writing a paper, but I sure know how to stand up and get people to come in my booth and sell out of all my stuff. Like, it's just another opportunity for kids to see the, the things that they can accomplish with skills that they didn't know they had. So that was phenomenal. And then, two last things, I guess. Eldorado, I was able to go to the Eldorado Senior Awards. The thing that blew me away there, the amount of money given out in scholarships to these kids, if you think you have a problem funding yourself into college, there are so many opportunities for you to get scholarships from this district specifically, and you just have to apply, and there were several kids that were, she got another scholarship. We, I mean, we, we looked at a couple of them, it was like, that, that girl was up there six times for scholarships, because she was doing everything she could to make sure she could get to that next level. So there are so many opportunities. And lastly, is my rookie graduation season, and nobody told me the, the onslaught of graduation excitement that happens when you're a board member. But it was, it was a lot, it was a long week. I don't know. I'm still exhausted, but it was, it was great getting to experience that, and I've never seen more smiles on high schoolers' faces than at graduation. You walk around campuses, and you don't see a whole lot of, I saw ear- You walk around campuses and you don't see a whole lot of, I saw ear to ear all over the place with ninety-eight percent of the kids. And the other ones were just looking around to see who was gonna hold up their fat head in the stands so that they could get excited about being celebrated. So it was, there's so many things. The district is phenomenal. I'm gonna continue to hammer the CTE. We need to make sure that we are focused on what all the kids, so that all the kids are able to succeed outside of school, whether it's next level education or it's getting in the workforce or trade schools, whatever. There's so many opportunities. And I just love that we have all these things for the kids in every different style of learning. And I think it's, you know, it's great. That's it.
All right, I'm gonna try the highlight reel too. Went to the prayer breakfast, the first responder breakfast, middle school track meet. I went to the Yorblinda High School golf. They had a ribbon cutting ceremony. So in the back near the baseball field, they have like three what look like batting cages. But they are able to hit the long range balls and use an iPad to show how far they hit it, where it went. They also have a putting green, so it was very, very cool. That was exciting to see. I'm a little bit of a golfer myself, but I don't get the special permission to go use the putting green, even though I desperately need it. I went to the Yorblinda Senior Awards. Me and Shelley Spessard sat there and we froze. Not a good wardrobe choice that night for us. I also, myself and Todd Fraser and Dr. Churnus, we went to the Yorblinda Water District and we sat down and talked with their leadership about CTE, about integrating, about, you know, visits and what the water district can do with our, you know, with our students and how we can show, you know, the manufacturing program. There was just so much that we, that they can offer. And there's so many job opportunities in the water programs and in programs like this that can really help our kids and our students to grow and just to have knowledge of it because there's so many jobs available from, you know, all levels, whatever your path is. And so we're really excited about that. I went to Bernardo Yorba Middle Schools graduation, Yorblinda High School, Esperanza. And like I said, it was just fun. It's, it's, it's a little tiring, but it's, but it is, it's so fun to see all the smiling faces and they're so happy and shake all the hands. And let me tell you, there's some really firm handshakes. You kind of like had a little whiplash after that from, you know, the excited and the firmness of that, of some of those shakes. Somebody did, we thought like a major incident had happened, but some, myself and Todd were on one side and somebody ended up doing a flip once they got their diploma. Yeah, so I think you, so, you know, it was a loud noise, oh no, and it was somebody doing a flip, so. There's a lot. And so I am excited. I'm going to the California Association of Black Educators. I'm going to their conference next month. The topic is gonna be implicit bias. And so I'm really excited to, to go out there and to sit in for that conference. I'm really looking forward to that. And I just wanted to also reiterate that I am so excited for the future of our district. And I know sometimes people who don't have any involvement in our district come up and, you know, make statements. And, you know, there's a lot of statements and a lot of like, I don't know, projections and like gossip. But I'll just say that our superintendent vote was five zero. Dr. Isaac Gates is in the audience and thank you so much for coming and we're so excited for you to come on board. Five zero vote by the board. Dr. Yang, five zero vote by the board. And as I sit up here and I look at everybody on this board, we are a student-centered board. We believe in educating the students and, you know, surrounding this, everything needs to be about the students. And I can tell you, looking out here at our directors, everybody believes that way. And so I am so confident in everyone who's sitting up here. I am confident in our directors. I'm confident in our principals. I think we are going to have an amazing year going forward. And so I would just encourage everybody to not listen to the gossip and not to listen to, you know, the board is doing something terrible, it's tanking. Because I think in the next year, you're going to see a lot of difference in this district. You're going to see a lot of open communication. You're gonna see more student-centered activities. You're gonna see more student-centered classrooms. And that has been the goal of us for a while and we're here. And I would say that within the last six weeks, we have accomplished so much, so, so much. Like, who would have ever thought in six weeks, we would have preschools opening? We would have combo classes that are not good for children and are not student-centered, just be taken away. Who would have thought that we would have a grandfather, a grandparent clause in our district where we can actually bring people in? I mean, we are doing so much for this district and I thank you, Dr. Churnus, for your excellent leadership. And so I would just say that, looking forward, we need to block out all this noise. There have been a lot of changes, but you know what, sometimes change is good. And with your five zero vote of this board, no matter where you think any of us lie, we have all concluded and we have all voted together that this is a great direction for our district. And so I am super excited. I can't wait for next year. I mean, my kids would probably be very upset with me if I knew I couldn't wait for August and September to come about. But, but I am just very, very, very excited. I am so excited for our team. You know, Todd is always saying like, "Let's go, team." And like when he says that up here, we are a team. Like, we really feel like we are a team. There's so much open communication, a lot of goal setting, a lot of dialogue. And so I'm excited. And so if anyone wants to say anything different, whether it's for political reasons or whatever, I think what we should do is focus and you can come here, you can ask us questions, you can ask staff questions, anywhere. And I think we really, really, I think this whole district is excited at the things that are coming. And there's gonna be so much more to come. Like, it's gonna be fabulous. And so I really hope that everybody has a great summer. And when we get back in August and September, we're gonna do some really great things. And before I conclude, I would love, thank you Linda Mannion for the work on the dyslexia. And thank you for the information and thank you for being so diligent in that. I appreciate it very much. And so, you know, hey, me and Linda, we're getting along, working together. So I see your face. I'm just kidding. But yeah, you know what, I'm really happy that, that she listened to me a few months ago because me and Sean, when we were at that conference and dyslexia was brought up, it was appalling, the numbers. That twenty-five percent of the United States children are dyslexic or have some type of reading disorder. And so thank you for following up on that and thank you for supporting that and supporting children. We appreciate it. And that concludes.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and start my three to five minute speech here. Oh, yeah, I've given all my time to my colleagues here. No, I just, just wanted to let all the department heads know, please let your staff and those that work under you, thank you. Big thank you for all the graduations, all the extra work they had to put in to get all these graduations and promotions together. It was quite a sight. And like many, all my colleagues up here, we, we attended either one or more either promotions or graduations. Their speeches were incredible. It was truly inspiring, some really great speeches and truly motivating. So I definitely appreciate that. Other things, to see all these kids walk across the stage, the, just the amount of success was incredible. You know, it was mentioned, you know, how many hands we had to shake. I tell you, mine is still sore. Just from Valencia alone was incredible. What was it, six hundred kids? That was amazing. So I really enjoyed that. I did attend a couple of small functions, including the prayer breakfast, which was, was amazing as it is each year. I did, like my colleagues, want to recognize Dr. Adamson. She, she provided our district with some amazing work. And I know she's going to have a successful career wherever she may land. And I truly appreciated her time here. I know welcoming Dr. Young on, that she does have some pretty big shoes to fill, but I'm very confident that she'll, she'll take care of it and get it done. So welcome aboard as well. And let's see, what else do I have for you? Looks like everybody else got all the good stuff, so I'm just, it was mentioned about all these new projects, including new preschool, which the district is just so excited about. With that said, however, it brings a lot more information to us as board members that we have to kind of go through, including information, you know, if a possible charter school is looking to, to come in. So we're having to go through a lot of this and kind of discern, you know, what's relative, what's important and so forth. And from what I was noticing on our, our next meeting is in August. And so I'm gonna make a recommendation to my, my colleagues, and I know they will hate this, but that we have a meeting also in July in order to kind of make sure we're ready for August meeting with all the things that are happening. And that's just a recommendation. We can talk about it a little more later. But just, just due to that, we need to kind of be ready, ready for the next year. Other thing was that I think we're also due to get our evaluation or at least work on an evaluation. So we may need to put together a workshop to get a board evaluation done. So that might be something else we, we look at. Okay, so how many minutes is that? No, okay. That will complete my board report. So thank you for listening to all of this. So we'll go ahead and get moving again. Thank you. All right, at this point, we do have a board presentation. Dr. Spessard, she will take us through on that.
Good evening, President Youngblood, Board of Trustees, Dr. Churnus Executive Cabinet, and members of the community. This evening, I will present to you PYL's local indicators as measured by the State Board of Education's approved standards within each priority area. California's accountability system, the California Dashboard, is based on eight state priorities. In order to measure each of these priorities, the state has established both state measures and local indicators. Local indicators are measures for some of the state's priorities that are not collected or reported by the state. Districts must locally collect data to measure and report out our progress on specific priority areas through the dashboard. This approach emphasizes local control, ensures a seamless accountability process across state and local levels, and paints a holistic picture of our district's overall progress. This chart serves to summarize the state's eight priorities and illuminates the breakdown between what is measured by the state versus what is measured by each district. We are required to report our progress on five local indicators referred to as priorities, which focus on basic services, the implementation of the state, California state standards, parent engagement, school climate, and course access. It is important to note that as we examine the local indicators, both qualitative and quantitative data were used, including local surveys, in-house reports, state reflective tools, as well as self-assessments. Priority one focuses on basic services. In the area of appropriately assigned teachers, we had zero teacher misassignments and zero vacant T-shirt positions. In the area of curriculum-aligned materials, all students had access to curriculum-aligned materials according to the Williams Compliance Report of twenty-two, twenty-three. In the area of clean and functioning school facilities, the overall rating from the twenty-two, twenty-three Facilities Inspections Tools, also known as FIT, indicated that all school facilities received the highest rating of good. Next is Priority Two, which focuses on the implementation of state standards. A self-analysis tool coupled with a stakeholder survey data was used to quantify progress in the implementation of state standards. At the top of the slide, you will see four metrics, educational service used to determine our level of implementation. For English Language Arts, English Language Development, and Mathematics, we scored ourselves as a three. As we are in full agreement that additional professional development is needed, as well as a deeper dive into our state standards, we continue to refine and develop pacing guides and common form of assessments across grade spans, as well as provide professional development in content and pedagogy. This year, after the initial implementation of new next-generation science standards materials across grade levels, the knowledge and implementation level of science is considered to be a Stage Three. As the curriculum is new, we recognize that our educators will need additional support and training, which will be offered throughout the summer and beyond. In the area of history/social science framework, we had scored ourselves a two as staff have piloted new materials and have engaged in the process of adopting new curriculum for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We've arranged for professional development for this content area over the summer and into the fall of twenty-three, twenty-four. In the area of career technical education, also known as CTE, we scored ourselves as a four, as this has been a focus at all comprehensive high schools for the past several years. The district has twenty-six CTE pathways and ten industry sectors. Overall, staff rates the programs at a four, full implementation. We continue to expand our offerings in this area and refine our practices. Finally, we rated ourselves at Stage Four for health education, physical education, visual and performing arts, and world language. For an additional measure of Priority Two, we have included the following perception rates of our teachers, parents, support staff, and students, indicating their satisfaction when responding to questions about communication of standards, high academic expectations for students, and effective classroom instruction. We continue to seek ongoing and frequent input from all educational partners as a means of ensuring we continue to improve across these areas. To measure parental engagement, the state mandates the use of specific prompts to quantify our progress. It is important to note that we've embedded these prompts into our annual stakeholder survey in order to rate our outcomes. Years ago, we created a crosswalk to correspond to the scale of the state's self-reflection rating of a score of one to five, five being the highest rating on the state's five-point scale. Survey responses showed, in the area of building relationships and building partnerships for student outcomes, PYL received a rating of four out of five. For seeking input for decision-making, the rating was a three point seven five. We take all stakeholder and educational partner results seriously and will continue to invest in building relationships and partnerships for the purpose of improving student outcomes while ensuring educational partners are involved in all decision-making. Priority Six focuses on school climate and asks us to measure student perceptions of school safety and connectedness. Students in grades three, five, eight, and eleven were asked to write their agreement on three different statements. The percentages on the slide indicate the percentage of students that completely or somewhat agreed with each prompt. On the prompt "I feel safe," eighty-eight percent of students at the elementary level, which was the same percentage as last year, responded that they completely agreed or somewhat agreed. Seventy-six percent at the secondary level indicated agreement to the statement as well. While we saw a decline by two percent, we are working closely with the Student Services Department to address the root cause of this decline. For the prompt "I belong," eighty-seven percent of elementary students completely agreed or somewhat agreed with the prompt, which is an increase of three percent over the previous year. And the secondary student agreement increased as well by four percent, yielding seventy-three percent. Finally, on the prompt "Teachers and other adults care about me," ninety-two percent responded positively, which reflects eleven percent increase, and seventy-five percent at the secondary level, which also increased by five percent. And finally, the last local indicator is Priority Seven, which measures course access. We are required to use our own metrics to track the extent to which all students have access to the enrolled and are enrolled in a broad course of study based on all grade spans, unduplicated student groups, English learners, low-income students, and foster youth, as well as students with disabilities. Starting at the elementary level, we are pleased to report that all students received a broad course of study, including all of the six listed content areas. Our teacher contract was also amended to ensure all, apologies. Our teacher contract was also amended to ensure all elementary general education class size maximums are inclusive of mild, moderate, special-day class students to ensure access to the least restrictive environment. Starting at the elementary level, we are pleased to report that- we are pleased to report that all students received a broad course of study, including all of the six listed content areas. For grades seven through twelve, a broad course of study includes courses in English, Social Science, World Language, Physical Education, Science, Mathematics, Visual and Performing Arts, Applied Arts, and CTE. To analyze access for our secondary students, we pulled enrollment and completion data in a broad range of classes among all significant student groups for the past two years. Some of the planned actions to address this need are part of our LCAP and include developing and articulated school counseling plans for secondary students to address the college and career readiness domain, implementing systems of support at each campus to increase academic success in core classes, and mitigation of the cost of IB and AP test fees, provide events and resources to prepare students to be college and career-ready, and monitor students who are at risk of not graduating and intervene as appropriate. As a result of measuring this data, reporting those results to you, our governing board, and uploading the results to the California Dashboard, we have successfully met the local indicator requirements. I would like to end by thanking all of our incredible educational partners for taking the time to provide valuable input on our twenty-three, twenty-four LCAP. Are there any questions?
I have just one. It's kind of a question comment. Um, I'm really glad that we have a really strong plan in place, and I know there's a lot of embedded into our LCAP for increasing our A through G, um, class requirements. But do we know, um, and this is probably something you're gonna have to get back to me about, why our, um, completion rate is so low in those A to G's with only, um, sixty-nine, fifty-nine percent of all students completing A through G requirements?
Yeah, I will have to get back to you on all the specific details in regards to that. Yeah, unless Ms. Agular.
Is that considered, I mean, to me, it seems low, but I'm like, is that considered low on a county?
I just said that, that seems like that might be even high from a population standpoint. So I don't know what, what's good or what's bad.
And does it mean that they're just taking one A through G course? Or what is that?
So the percentage was A through G completion.
Yeah, that's a.
Yeah, so they completed the A through G requirements.
The whole, okay.
The whole range.
Mm-hmm. But I definitely can get back to you on specific.
It's what's a range that's typical.
Average. What's average, or where do we fall in on a dis, um, on a county level?
Yeah, I can definitely get that information for you. Um, I don't know that there's anything average post-pandemic, but I'm happy to get that information. I'll get it to Dr. Chernus to get to you.
Thank you.
Anything else? No. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dr.
Thank you so much.
Okay. This will lead us into our action items. Uh, curriculum and instruction. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt the Local Control and Accountability Plan for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Blade, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Dr. Young, would you please?
Sure. Thank you, President Youngblood. I'd like to begin by thanking each of you for your time and efforts these past two months since our study session on April twenty-fifth. In reviewing and providing suggestions for our Local Control and Accountability Plan, we have amended the document to include the feedback we received from each of you as a result of your thorough review of the plan. The document was posted on the district website in both English and Spanish with a link to allow the community to provide additional feedback, thus ensuring our plan is as comprehensive as possible and represents the voices of all of our educational partners. We've provided each of you with a copy of the updated goals and actions for Focus Areas one-point-oh through four-point-oh that reflect your recommendations, additional stakeholder feedback, input received from the OCDE, and follow-up questions received. We're pleased to present to you this evening the complete and finalized LCAP plan for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year for your final approval.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just, um, have some question, or comments, I guess. Um, I was just really grateful for the enhanced, um, action items for homeless students, special education students, um, the extra for parents, getting them trained in phonics and reading strategies, and, and how to partner in their children's education. Um, I like that we're looking at adding a family resource to Melrose. And, um, I think, um, the plan is, is really good, and I'm, I'm just grateful to see all those things added into it. And, um, I just have some basic observations, um, since I was doing the compare/contrast on Saturday of the two documents. It would really be nice, um, to have those changes documented, so we know what was added, what was taken away. Um, you know, some of it was just language, which I don't think we need to worry about, sentence structure, but, um, you know, adding the goals would be nice to know that. And then also, um, timestamp or something on the document. So, because I was writing myself, I was writing June twenty-twenty-three on all the pages. So I knew that this was the old, and this was the new, so I wasn't getting them confused. So that would just help me.
Absolutely. There are many ways that we can improve this process in the future so that the, um, changes are much more digestible and clear for the board, um, from April to now. Of course.
I, uh, actually liked the, the packet that you sent out. It was, uh, it was binder-ready. So basically what I did is I took the, uh, the proposed draft of it and, uh, flipped it all onto the back, ended, uh, entered all of the, the new data, so I could kind of compare and contrast on that. So. Thank you.
Thank you for all the hard work and months and months and months that went into this, and collecting all of the information from all of our stakeholders and putting them in, making sure that they're included.
Thank you again. Okay, so all in favor of this LCAP?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries five-oh. Thank you, doctor. Okay, item number two, please.
I'll make a motion. We approve the adoption of the following materials for implementation in the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year for the sixth-grade Dual Language Academy, DLA. Vista Higher Learning: Galleria de Lengua y Cultura, Volume One, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Nice job.
I'll second. Thank you very much.
Dr. Young, please.
Thank you again. At the May ninth board meeting, the board voted to place the proposed Sixth Grade Dual Language Academy Curriculum, Vista Higher Learning: Galleria de Lengua y Cultura, Volume A, twenty-two, twenty-three, on a thirty-day public display. We received no community feedback during the thirty-day public display period. At this time, we are seeking your final approval to formally adopt the materials for implementation in the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Questions?
No, I just think the book delivers what the instructors asked for, and so I saw it all in there, so thank you.
Okay, with that said, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-oh. Uh, may I have a motion for item three, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of the following Dual Language Academy materials for implementation in the twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-two, twenty-four school year. De Como la Tía Lola Vino de Visita a Quiere Se, How Tía Lola Came to Visit, by Julia Alvarez. La Reyna del Taco, Steph Soto, Taco Queen, by Jennifer Torres. La Distancia Entre Nosotros, The Distance Between Us, a memoir, by Reyna Grande. Invisible, by Eloy Moreno. Inquiry by Design, Inquiry, Inquiry by Design, Spanish Edition, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Second.
Dr. Young?
Thank you again. The aforementioned Dual Language Academy materials have also completed their thirty-day public display period. At the closure of that period, we received no community feedback. As such, we are seeking your final approval to formally adopt the materials for implementation in the twenty-two, twenty-four school year.
Questions?
No, I just want to thank, um, and they know who they are, the people that helped me read these books in Spanish, and give me, uh, reviews. So thank you very much, and I had a lot of, enjoyed a lot of reading.
Thank you for telling us about how many comments. I mean, I appreciate that. There are none, but I like to know.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries five-oh. I need a motion for number four, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt the following Cambridge materials for implementation in the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Hotter Education, Access to History for Cambridge International AS Level, International History, eighteen-seventy, nineteen forty-five, twenty-nineteen, for eleventh grade, Cambridge International History Year One. Hotter Education, uh, Access to History for the IB Diploma, the Cold War, Superpower Tensions and Rivalries, Second Edition Boost eBook, twenty-two, for twelfth grade, Cambridge International History Year Two.
Second.
Okay. Dr. Young?
Okay. The aforementioned Cambridge materials have completed their thirty-day public display period, and we received no community feedback. At this time, we are seeking your final approval to formally adopt the materials for implementation in the twenty-two, twenty-four school year.
It was riveting, and I learned a lot.
Okay.
I liked the setup, um, how you could take notes, and, because it was all done online, and students could just make notes in the, um, the thing. And, um, I enjoyed learning a little bit more about some of our fascist leaders, and, um, and really the role of the Depression on World War II. I learned some new things, so.
Anyone else? Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-oh.
I'll move, we approve the adoption of the following AP materials for implementation for the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four school year. BFW Publishers Environmental Science for the AP Course Fourth Edition, twenty-two, twenty-three, by Andrew Friedland and Rick Relia, I think. Uh, BFW Publishers, Krugman's Economics for the AP Course Fourth Edition, twenty-two, twenty-three, by David Anderson and Margaret Ray.
I'll second.
Okay. Dr. Young?
Okay. The aforementioned AP materials have completed their thirty-day public display period, and, you guessed it, we received no community feedback. As such, we are seeking your final approval to formally adopt the materials for the twenty-two, twenty-four school year.
Speaking as a parent of a student in AP, uh, AP, APs, AP Euroscience, um, this book is great. Um, it's much better. I, it was really fun to look through and, and read, and, and much better than the old one, so I'm really excited about this new one.
I really liked how, like, in the environmental science, it told the kids exactly, like, which formulas or equations they needed to learn, and which ones would be provided for them on the exams, and, and like, all the, all the tips and, um, practice skills and practice exams that were in both of the books. And, um, yeah, I think our students are gonna do great with these.
I enjoyed the, um, environmental science much more than the economics, but you probably were the opposite.
Economics is my jam.
Okay. Um, yeah, they didn't have comics, so I was left out. Um, all, all in favor for the, for this?
Aye.
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 Motion carries five-oh. Okay, that brings us up to our business and financial. Uh, I'd like a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four adopted budget.
I'll second.
Mr. Jared Almo, if you would?
Right. Well, thank you, and good evening. Uh, tonight, we're going to review with you our twenty-two, twenty-four adopted budget, and also provide an overview of the state's fiscal outlook and the governor's May revise proposal for next fiscal year. Uh, the adopted budget represents our preliminary plan for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-four, and also incorporates all the key components of the governor's May revise. Uh, the report is based on the latest financial information and assumptions that we have available, and it also contains our estimated expenditures for the current year. So here's a look at our agenda for tonight. Uh, first, we're going to review with you the state's current fiscal outlook, and the ga, governor's May revise proposal for next year, followed by a review of the district's proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-four. We're also going to take a look at our multi-year projection, and then we're going to talk a little bit about some of the key budget challenges that we face moving forward, and the next steps in the budgeting process. So here's a look at the state's current economic outlook. Uh, so we know the May revise was released back on Friday, May twelfth, and it reflects substantially weaker state tax collections than were projected just a few months ago. In fact, uh, personal income and corporate tax receipts are down by about nine billion dollars in the first ten months of this fiscal year alone. It's important to recognize that the tax collections have been impacted by both the IRS and state decisions to delay the tax filing deadline to mid-October due to the, uh, twenty-two, uh, to, um, excuse me, uh, delay the, uh, deadline to October twenty-two, twenty-three due to the winter storms. And this is expected to affect more than ninety-nine percent of California's tax filers in fifty-five of the fifty-eight counties located within California. As a result of that, uh, the May revision forecasts that roughly forty-two billion dollars in scheduled tax receipts will be delayed until October of twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, with that said, uh, the May revision revenue forecast is based on a scenario that assumes continued, but slowing economic growth, and does not forecast a recession. However, with the continued decline in state tax collections, state budget shortfall is now estimated at thirty-one and a half billion, which is up about nine billion dollars since the January budget was, uh, released just a few months ago. So here's a chart that highlights the state's revenue estimates, and you can see from this slide, for the current fiscal year, uh, state revenues are down by ten-point-four billion, and since that, since, uh, the state budget was approved back in June of last year, we're down by roughly two billion dollars below the estimates of back in January. And then for next year, for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-four, uh, state revenues are forecast to decline even further, from two-hundred-and-six billion estimated back in January to two-hundred-one-point-two billion as of the May revision. Unfortunately, there continues to be some additional risks to the state's current economic outlook, and in the near term, uh, the most immediate risk is fear of prolonged inflation. And if inflation were to persist, the Federal Reserve may have to continue to raise interest rates, uh, which could trigger a national recession, and then exacerbate declines in state revenue collections, and ultimately impact the Proposition Ninety-eight Minimum Funding Guarantee for schools as well. So here's a glance at the governor's May revise budget proposal for next fiscal year. So as a result of those rising cost pressures, the May revision includes a statutory cost of living adjustment of eight-point-two-two percent on our LCFF funding for next year. Additionally, certain categorical programs that are funded outside the LCFF will also receive that statutory COLA of eight-point-two-two percent next year, and these programs include special education, child nutrition, as well as the Mandate Block Grant program. Uh, regarding the Proposition Ninety-eight Minimum Funding Guarantee, a guarantee is forecast to decline by two billion next year, and that's due to the continued decline in state tax collections since January. And we're going to cover the impact, or the implications of this decline in the guarantee a little later in the presentation. So here's, uh, here's a look at this chart, and this highlights some of the key changes between the governor's January, uh, budget proposal and his May revision. And as we shared on the previous slide, uh, the Prop Ninety-eight Minimum Guarantee is forecast to decline by two billion next year, and that's below the estimates that were contained in the governor's January budget. A slide also highlights the increase in the statutory COLA, uh, for next year, which is up modestly from eight-point-one-three percent projected back in January to eight-point-two-two percent under the governor's May revise. And unfortunately, the May revision also includes some pretty significant reductions in one-time funding, including a six-hundred-million-dollar increase in the proposed reduction to the Arts, Music, and Discretionary Block Grant, and this brings the total reduction from one-point-two billion proposed back in January to one-point-eight billion under the governor's May revise. Likewise, the governor's also proposing a two-and-a-half-million-dollar reduction to the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant, and we're going to highlight the impact of these one-time funding reductions on our district on this next slide. So regarding the proposed reduction to the Arts, Music, and Instructional Materials Discretionary Block Grant, uh, this will translate into a reduction of seven-point-one million in one-time funding for our district, which will leave a balance of about seven-and-a-half million dollars available for allocation in the coming year. Uh, likewise, the proposed reduction to the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant will translate into a reduction of about seven-and-a-half million dollars in one-time funding for our district, leaving a balance of about sixteen-point-two million in one-time funding available. Additionally, uh, in order to provide even more funding, uh, to serve the highest-need schools, governor's proposing three-hundred-million dollars in ongoing funding as an add-on to the LCFF, and he's termed this new funding the equity multiplier. which will provide approximately seven hundred and forty-one dollars per student to schools serving the highest concentration of low-income students. And we do have one school that's expected to receive this funding if it's included as part of the final adopted budget. It's Melrose Elementary School, expected to receive about a two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. There'll be some additional requirements, some additional LCAP reporting, some stakeholder engagement meetings now at the school site level that will be required, and some additional reporting in the LCAP as well. Next, we're gonna take a look at some of the key changes that occurred since the second interim report was approved back in mid-March. So in this chart, you can see the cost of living adjustments, as well as the CalPERS and CalSTRS employer contribution rate estimates for each of the next three fiscal years. And in addition to the modest increase in the statutory COLA next year, uh, the projected COLA in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five has been revised up slightly as well. And you'll notice in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, that COLA has been revised down, uh, ever so slightly. Uh, regarding the CalPERS employer contribution rate estimates, uh, the rate decreased from twenty-seven percent projected back in January to twenty-six point six-eight percent in May, that's for next fiscal year. Now likewise, the CalPERS employer contribution rate estimates are forecasted to decrease slightly in each of the next two years as well. However, the CalPERS rates are set to increase from twenty-five point three-seven percent in the current fiscal year, twenty-two, twenty-three, to twenty-six point six-eight percent in the budget year twenty-three, twenty-four. On the other hand, our Cal, CalSTRS employer contribution rate estimates are projected to remain unchanged at nineteen point one percent over the three-year forecast. Uh, next, we're gonna take a look at some of the key budget assumptions that we use to build our adopted budget. And so I'm not gonna go through all these projection assumptions, but I do wanna highlight a few. First, looking at the salary lines, if you were to take a look at our Saks Financial Reports, you would see the increased cost for step and column for all of our classified, certificated and management employees. If you were to drill down further and look at the statutory line items, you'd also see the increased cost for the CalPERS pension system, that's reflected there. Uh, we talked about the statutory COLA earlier. Regarding enrollment, we're, we are projecting continued declines in enrollment of four hundred students each of the next few years. Our attendance rate, uh, which we talked about in the past, has been on the decline during the pandemic and has been for most districts throughout the state of California. It has appeared to stabilize at about ninety-three and a half percent. And you'll notice we're projecting that ninety-three and a half percent to, to continue forward in the subsequent years as well. Uh, regarding your LCFF funding projections, uh, we're gonna review those when we take a look at our multi-year projection here in a bit. Uh, health and welfare benefit costs up eight and a half percent next year, and that's based on the final negotiated rates with all of our health and welfare benefit providers. And then we are budgeting six percent increases each in the next couple of years, and that's based on, uh, national healthcare cost trends over the last several years. So here's a look at the district's multi-year projection. And you'll notice, um, this multi-projection is, again, it's just focused in on our unrestricted operating counts or those discretionary accounts that we have. And we've included the current year, twenty-two, twenty-three, this is how we estimate we're gonna close out this year. We've also included twenty-three, twenty-four, this is the adopted budget, and then the two subsequent years as well. Uh, for the current year, twenty-two, twenty-three, you can see that we're forecasting an operating surplus of almost nine point seven million dollars. Uh, that operating surplus includes some one-time savings. When we back out that one-time savings, we're left with a structural surplus in the current year of six point one million. Uh, moving out to twenty-three, twenty-four, you can see the operating surplus projected at just under five point nine million. But that surplus does include about three point six million in one-time expenses. So when we back out the one-time expenses, we're left with a structural surplus in the budget year of roughly nine and a half million dollars. When we go out to twenty-four, twenty-five, you'll notice, though, that operating surplus is projected to decline to about four and a half million dollars. And the reason for that is, is that when you look at the COLA in twenty-four, twenty-five, of three point nine four percent, it's not enough to offset declining enrollment, and as a result, we'll see a year-over-year reduction of about six hundred and twenty-one thousand in our LCFF funding that year, and that's why you see that reduc, reduction in the, uh, projected operating surplus. Same thing holds true in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. You'll see that surplus decline slightly to two million. Again, our operating expenditures projected to increase faster than our operating revenues under the LCFF, primarily due to declining enrollment. So again, three key reasons that contribute to the general fund operating pressures that begin in twenty-four, twenty-five. First, we have the three point nine-four percent estimated COLA, it's just not enough to cover the offsetting declining enrollment, which will trigger that year-over-year reduction in LCFF funding of six hundred and twenty-one thousand beginning in twenty-four, twenty-five. On top of that, we have cost increases for step and column, health and welfare benefits, and Persson Stirs Pension Contributions, which continue to increase on average about two point six percent per year over the three-year forecast. And then lastly, uh, in order to be able to maintain a competitive compensation package, we know increases in, in salary will also impact those surpluses moving forward. And then here's a look at how we project to close out a next fiscal year. Uh, we project to close out the year with just over a hundred eleven point three million in our combined general fund, of which seventy point nine million is in unrestricted accounts, just over forty point three million in restricted accounts. We also have that legally restricted reserve for cash in stores, uh, set aside at just under three hundred and eighteen thousand. And then in the center of the slide, you can see we set aside these other commitments. A reserve for textbook adoptions at five million, uh, declining enrollment of ten million, deficit mitigation at just over sixteen million, and then all of our restricted categorical programs set aside at just over forty point three million. We also have a contingency reserve of nineteen eight, nineteen point eight million, and that leaves us with a reserve for economic uncertainties of nineteen point eight million or five percent of our total operating budget. Next, we're gonna just review some of the key budget challenges that we face moving forward. And again, we know, uh, declining enrollment continues to be a challenge for our district, as well as other districts throughout the county, throughout the state and the nation. And over the, the past three years alone, our district enrollments declined by about eighteen hundred and fifty students, and this year, enrollment's down by about three hundred and seventy students over the prior year. And again, that's primarily in the middle and the high school grade levels. In addition to the enrollment declines, our district's attendance rate has declined as well during the pandemic and remains, uh, well below our historical trends. And since districts are funded off of the number of students that attend school each day, not actual enrollment, this will exacerbate the funding losses over the next few years. Uh, additionally, of course, we have increasing cost pressures for items such as step and column, health and welfare benefits, and Persson Stirs Pension Contributions, which will continue to place additional strains on the budget. And then we, of course, we have inflationary cost pressures in other expenditure categories, such as supplies, services and equipment, which are up as well. And then lastly, other challenges include all the management of our one-time COVID-nineteen relief funding, as well as the volatility in state revenue collections, which will ultimately impact the Prop Ninety-eight Guarantee. And then this slide just highlights all the temporary positions and services that are funded with the COVID, uh, one-time funds that our district has received. And it's important that we track these dollars separately to ensure that ongoing programs and services are not charged to any of these one-time funding sources. And unfortunately, this is definitely one of those areas that districts can find themselves in financial trouble if they're not making the required adjustments in positions and services charged to those one-time funding sources. As a result, our Business Services Division will continue to track these very, very closely, uh, moving forward. And then this slide just highlights the three primary cost drivers that school districts will face in the coming years. And as you can see from this chart, uh, cost for step and column movement, Persson Stirs Pension Obligations, and health and welfare benefits going up on average about two point six percent over the course of that three-year forecast. On the other hand, after we adjust for declining enrollment, our LCFF base funding is expected to increase at just under one point seven percent over that same three-year forecast. And so with our, uh, operating expenditures forecast to rise faster than our operating revenues, uh, that will lead to a reduction in that structural surplus in the out-years absent either additional funding from the state or reductions that we're able to make at the local level. And then lastly, just gonna wrap up with a review of our budget timeline. Uh, in order to meet that June fifteenth constitutional deadline, a legislature did pass the main budget bill. They did that back on June fifteenth, just meeting that requirement. And the governor now has until the end of this month to sign the final adopted state budget. And of course, our staff's gonna evaluate any differences between the May revision, uh, budget proposal and the final adopted budget, and then we'll bring any required budget adjustments back to the board for future approval. And so that's our presentation this evening. Uh, before we open up to questions, again, I'd like to thank our, our Director of Fiscal Services, Phong Tran, our Director of Business Services, Christina Michelle, and the entire Fiscal Services and Business Office teams for all the work, all the effort that went into, uh, making this, uh, presentation tonight. So thank you.
Wow, okay, questions?
Will you remind me, is it five hundred thousand dollars, half a million for each percent?
Yeah, our, our, um, this is a great question. So our LCFF funding is about two hundred and seventy-three million dollars, and so one percent, it's about two point seven, uh, million dollars. And so for every percent, we're down on our attendance rate, and we lose about two point seven million dollars.
Wow.
So it's a, it's a big, uh, it's a big adjustment. Most districts in the state are some, down somewhere between four and five percent. Uh, we're right around three, so we're doing well, but, um, it definitely room for improvement.
So is there, Richard, when, um, years ago when we started the everyday counts, um, there was a story I heard on the radio about one school district that gave away a car, um, which is a little extreme. Um, but that was sort of the, the inspiration of it, because they were having trouble with, with attendance. And so they reached out to a car dealer, and it was something about, you know, it, it wasn't just one year, but it was, um, a significant period of years, and you were put into this pool, and if, um, you know, you, anyway, regardless, my point is, is there some sort of thing that we can look at as far as incentivizing something and, and encouraging it, um, more attendance? I mean, two point one million dollars, or two point seven million dollars is, we could buy a lot of cars just to get that bump.
I think we can, I think that the, the state is also looking at how we fund education. Prior to this budget adoption, they were looking at, you know, do, is there a way to fund on enrollment? Because the reality is ADA, which is your average daily attendance, is, you know, five percent less than what it was, um, before the pandemic. So, um, this is a common theme, um, at the business level. We're talking about funding on enrollment rather than ADA potentially. Um, but, uh, it's just, the kids, kids are staying home because they're sick, right? And so we wanna encourage kids to stay home when they're sick. Um, so it's a different, it's a different world. Um, so ADA at ninety-three, ninety-four percent, where we used to be ninety-eight percent, is the new norm. So I think more so than encouraging kids to come to school, um, it's looking at, uh, advocating for the state to fund schools a little bit differently. Because we can't tell our kids to stay home when you're sick, and then at the same time say, you better come to school every day. Um, so I think it's a different dynamic we're working on. Um, uh, but the bottom line is, the more kids that we can bring into the district and, and try to grow that enrollment piece, um, that's the, that's the big ticket. It's particularly at the younger levels, because every TK, kinder kid we bring in our district, we get funding for, for the next thirteen years. Um, so we need to look at that as well.
Thank you.
Uh, I was related to that, I know, I know it's three-year average as far as attendance, and we're losing eighteen, nineteen coming up, or we're losing nineteen, twenty.
Yeah, so it's the three-year average you fund off next year, so twenty-twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, so yeah, so we go into the, the bad average now.
Yes.
Um, are any, not to bring ray of sunshine, um, but in these enrollment projections, do we have anything calculated in for the impact in the future from opening the preschools? I'm guessing we don't have anything related to the grandparent, uh, situation, but did we factor that in, or is that gonna be an extra bump potentially?
Uh, we, we have not factored that in.
Good.
So we'll be monitoring enrollment very closely at the start of the year, and we'll see what types of impact that might make, and if we need to make adjustments, we can make those at first interim or second interim and moving forward.
Cool.
It's a great, great point.
So. Go ahead. I, I just have one other question about the, what's, what's the means that we're gonna be tracking those? Are we just gonna have a separate system, or what?
In terms of enrollment?
Yeah.
Yeah, so at the beginning of the year, what we'll do is we, uh, we track enrollment day by day. So literally each day, we'll compare enrollment, and we'll compare it to the previous year too. And so we do that by grade level, and so we'll get a really good idea of where our enrollment's up, where we're down. So if we're up in transitional kindergarten, we'll, we'll see that right away. And so as we bring forward another budget version for you to approve, the first interim would be the next one in December. Uh, any adjustments that we need to make, we can count further there.
I just wanna make sure that, when we're saying what the impact is, so that we can evaluate where we push in more. It's, is, I mean, I'm excited to see what the impacts are, because I think we're gonna see a big impact there. Um, and then one last thing before, I'll just finish up. Um, on the surplus, other than the one-time funds, what's the biggest factor for this year as having such a large surplus?
Yeah, I think that, that's a great question. I think the biggest factor is when you look at the funded COLA. Uh, the funded COLA was, I believe it was six point, oh, boy, I don't wanna mess this up, but about six point five-nine percent plus the augmentation, I think was six point seven. I think it was thirteen point zero-two percent combined.
Gotcha.
And so there was a big COLA, largest COLA probably in the, the history of the state, yeah. So it, that's a big reason for the, the increase that you see this year.
So not like strategies that we're gonna, we're doing good, but I'm just saying.
There's definitely a big part of management of the funds, making sure that we're staffing, uh, classrooms appropriately, making sure that we're attracting our expenditures very closely, managing our funds well, so there's definitely strategy there.
And, and when we come back in August, we will, um, be talking about our budget for all this one-time money, how we're gonna spend it. Um, because you mentioned there's sixteen million or seventeen million of, uh, um, learning and recovery money, and so those kind of budgets we'll bring forward for next year.
And the block grant too, correct?
The block grant, the, the Prop Twenty-eight or whatever, the, the arts grant. Um, so there'll be, there'll be other budgets that we talk about. We're still starting to do some preliminary planning on that, because it's more money that we're gonna, we're gonna get and budget and spend starting next year.
Okay, I have a question about the Arts, Music and Instructional Materials Discretionary and the Learning Recovery. How about the district already received funds? Are we gonna have to give back funds? How is that working out?
Yeah, that's a good question. I, I believe, I'd have to go back and look at those two programs. But one of the programs, we have been over-allocated funds, and so the state will be clawing back those dollars. And what we'll have to do is when we close out our books for this fiscal year, we're gonna have to book a liability for the amount they over-appropriated. And so our Fiscal Services team knows to put that on their year-end closing schedule and make sure we track it, but we'll literally, literally be giving them that cash back.
Did you include that in our budget, uh, our?
Yes, on the budget side, on the budget side it is.
But, but I recall too, we had ten million, and we held it for Dr. Churness, so it's not spent, we haven't spent it, so that's a good thing, right?
Yeah, there's none, none of those monies have been allocated as of yet. So those dollars that I gave earlier, uh, it was on this slide over here. Of course, I can't find it. It's the way it always works. It was in the assumptions, it must've been further back. Was it part of this? Let me go further. Thank you, thank you, Olivia. Yeah, so it's, you can see how much we're expected to receive on this slide. Seven point five million available for the Arts, Music, and then, uh, for the Learning Recovery, sixteen point two million.
I guess just one more comment about declining enrollment. Um, and I'm only thinking of this because we added the, the grandparent clause, and my neighbor is a grandparent. And all of her grandchildren go to a local private school and then walk home to her house. And I'm, and it's a, it's a K-eight school. So I was wondering, are we gonna be doing any outreach to those private schools, letting them know? I mean, I'm gonna go tell my neighbor all about how she can send her grandkids at the street to Valencia High School. Um, but I'm just thinking of ways that we can get this information out and increase our enrollment.
Certainly, we'll look, certainly we'll look for those opportunities to try and promote it to our private schools and anywhere that, uh, that we can promote it. Uh, keeping in mind that this, if they're out of district families, they still need to secure release from their district to come. Um, but we will give, uh, those with grandparents inside the district residing inside priority to ensure that they do come, so, um, but, but we'll look for those opportunities to promote that within the private schools, sure.
And just like this charter school said earlier, how they could go to the OCBE to appeal. If we were to deny anything, if another district denies, they can go to the OC Board of Education and appeal to have them released.
That's exactly right. Yes, they can.
I think we should get signs and put them all over town.
I'm all for it.
I think we have a, a media department at one of our schools that could do some pretty killer advertisements. I don't know.
I love it.
I myself like the free card giveaway if I can get one from Mr. Giadonna.
You can't qualify. Yeah, you're disqualified.
You're already graduated. You're exempt.
Okay, folks. So, we have a, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh.
I'll make a motion. We adopt Resolution Number 22-25 to approve the education protection account for the 22, 23 school year, fiscal year.
Second.
Ms. Blades got that one. Mr. Jared Elmer.
Thank you. In November of 2012, California voters approved Proposition 30. And this initiative creates a state general fund account to receive and disperse the incremental taxes originating from Prop 30. Prop 55, which was approved in November of 2016, continues the income taxes instituted by Prop 30 through the year 2030. And these tax revenues are accounted for in the state's education protection account. Each year, school districts are required to determine how funds received from the education protection account are spent. And for 22, 23, staff estimates that we receive approximately 4.8 million from the state's EPA account. And all these funds will be spent on classroom teacher salaries.
Questions? Pretty straightforward. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. All right, our next portion is our Human Resources. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We increase the certificated substitute teachers' daily rate effective July 1, 2023. $200 a day for daily general education substitute teachers, $205 a day for daily special education substitute teachers, and $220 a day for long-term and resident substitutes.
Second.
All right, Ms. Nancy Blade, would you take us there?
All of you and all of you. Being brought forward for your consideration is an increase in the substitute teachers' daily rate of pay effective July 1, 2023. Wages and, a wage analysis was conducted and new rates proposed that will make our salaries competitive as well it will build our team of substitute teachers.
Questions?
I have no questions, but I'm really thrilled that we're adding this on because we were at the very, very bottom of the pay scale. And this will make us competitive and we'll be able to get some more substitutes. Why would they come here if they were going to get paid the le, the least? So, I'm thrilled. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Just excellent.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries five oh. Okay, item number two.
Pursuant to Government Code 54953, approve the employment contract for Dr. Olivia Yang as Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services with an annual salary of $218,340. She shall also receive all incentives available to other members of the district's certificated management staff, including longevity pay and mileage stipend. The contract will remain in effect from June 20, 2023 through June 30, 2025.
Second.
Any comments about her coming on with that contract?
No.
All right, I think we'll keep her. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Welcome aboard. Okay, that brings us up to our consent calendar. The actions proposed for the consent calendar items are consistent with approved practices of the district and are deemed routine in nature. The trustees received board agenda backup information in advance of the scheduled meeting and are prepared to vote with the knowledge on the block vote items. Are there any items in which need to be pulled?
41 and 42.
Are there any other items that need to be pulled? Okay, so I'll need a motion to approve the items except for 41 and 42.
I'll make a motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries five oh. Let's take a look at the items that Ms. Blades has brought up. Number 41.
Make a motion to approve the district membership in the California School Board Association and California School Boards Association Education Legal Alliance for the 23, 24 school year.
Second.
Concerns?
Yes, I recommend that we do not renew this year.
I recommend that we do. And I, and I participate in, in OCSBA or in CSBA and on delegate assembly. And some of the things that have been brought up before, for example, pulling out of, of the Calif, or a National School Boards Association, we've done that as a California School Boards Association. Really, the only way that we can have input and, and, and change things and, and have a seat at the table is by going. So, I recommend that we continue to be part of it and make our voices heard.
Change what kind of things? Just curious.
Like NSBA, like we, we are no longer a member, California's no longer a member of National School Boards Associations, things like that. The things that we have concerns with, it's important that we go and talk to them about and make sure that we're getting our voices as, as PYL, but also as Orange County.
So, I would say that I've emailed several times to our representatives and they do not email me back. And when they haven't liked my emails, they actually turned off my emails. And so, we had to get them turned back on because of breach of contract. And I'm also concerned too that it's essentially for the next one, the GAMET online subscription, we don't really need that because we can, we have access to the board policies through the board docs. And so, it's $31,000 for just, it's a lobbyist firm. Like, we need to be honest about what this actually is. It's a lobbyist firm.
It, it is.
And so, we're paying $21,000 for, for them. And they're not really listening to everybody. But then also too, we're paying an extra $10,000 for the online subscription. And then, that doesn't even include if you take any classes or if you go to any conferences, you're still paying out of your pocket. I would say that it would be fiscally responsible for us if it was, if you join and then you can take unlimited classes, you can take unlimited things. But that's not it. And so, I'm just not comfortable too, especially with some of the things that have been brought up in the last conferences and some of the speakers. I just don't believe that it's necessary. And I think we can actually get training from several other sources. This isn't the only place that is able to provide us with training. Just because we've done it in the past doesn't mean we should only rely on that. I've gone to five or six different places for training for certain things. And it's been spectacular. So, I think we should actually like broaden our, our horizons, if, if you will.
I think the trainings that I've been to through CSBA have been spectacular as well. I went through the Masters in Governance Program and learned all about school, the variety of things that are involved in schools. There hasn't been something as comprehensive as that before. The, this, the CSBA is a, it, it is a group that lobbies, but they're lobbying for public education and they're lobbying on behalf of school board members that give their opinion. So, when we're talking about one calling up there and saying, "This is my thought, this is what I want to happen," there's 5,000 members in, in CSBA. So, it's difficult to have one person be able to have, make a difference. But we have to work together and work together as a large group to make things change. When you look at GAMET and the subscriptions that we can use for, for our policies, it's, we could spend a lot more money working with attorneys trying to build the policies, much more than we do for, for the, for CSBA. Just our attorneys alone that we're, we just approved are $500,000 for this next upcoming year. $20,000 and the $5,000 to just have a basic board policies that are relevant and that we could use, I think is worth the value.
No, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Churnus, but the board docs, is this on? Yeah. The board doc software that we're going to be adding, does that have, would that replace the GAMET function that CSBA supplies?
Yes and no. The board docs will allow us to upload our board policies. CSBA does provide updates to board policies that we can use. So, we wouldn't be receiving their, their CSBA recommended updates. So, that is something that we will have to track on our own if we don't go with them. We did check with, with CSBA. And Annette, correct me if I'm wrong, we would, we wouldn't be able to receive the CSBA updates unless we were a member. So, we couldn't pay separate to get the CSBA updates.
Oh, you have to be in the whole program to get any piece of the program?
Or you could check their Twitter. They put a lot out on Twitter.
If we did not renew and then we realized, "Oh, we're missing a lot. We need to renew." Can we renew at any point? Is it an annual?
It's annual, but I, I think you could probably, I haven't asked him that question.
I'd be, I mean, I'd be interested in saying, "Let's see." We think we have things that we're missing out on, but we don't know?
I agree.
If we, if we leave CSBA, then I come off of as delegate assembly and we don't have any voice anymore as a district.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, but I'm, I'm just saying, what impact is that going to make? Doesn't sound like we really know. And I'm, I'm okay saying, "Let's try it" if, if that's an option. Do you see, Dr. Churnus, do you see any immediate negative to not having access to the GAMET system?
I'd have to defer to staff on how often they're receiving the, the policy updates and, and, but that, to me, the, the immediate administrative, again, is these policies. But I believe they charge, you know, I think it's the, the second item here. So, it's the, 5,006.90 that we're unable, they're, they're unable, they won't allow us to pay that unless we were, you know, paid the other membership. But to me, that's the immediate administrative. And I don't know how often they provide updates.
I can provide comment to that. Usually, as our executive team receives those communications, they're about quarterly. Anytime there's changes within the law, we take a look at those changes for any prospective changes to our board policies or administrative regulations. And we divide those up. And then, we, we research those to determine what changes need to be made with existing policy relative to, to what the recommendations are. So, those come about quarterly with, with any changes that, that come through the law.
But, but we're always updated quarterly with the changes regardless if we're with the CSBA. It's not like we won't get that information. But no, if you make changes to the law, they're not just going to only give it to CSBA to disperse. They're going to make it available to everybody.
The other, while the other resources that we do have available to us is, the Orange County Department of Ed will provide us with updates through Student Services or through the Business Department. Anytime that there are changes, they sometimes will, will release guidance on that that will help us. But we still, we'd need to go through the process of updating the language in the policy, which we usually get from, from GAMET, typically.
Yeah, I, I, I think that there are ways for us to keep our policies updated. So, this is not something that, you know, we can, we can look to other districts, we can rely on the county. I think that, that, you know, membership in CSBA shouldn't be about, in my opinion, the board shouldn't decide that based on the, you know, the annual policy updates. Staff will be able to figure that out. I think the board should consider this membership as, you know, the, you know, the, the purpose and intent of CSBA as a, you know, advocate and whether the board's in line with their advocacy.
I would say that they've gone against parental rights over the last couple of years. I voted no for last year, so I'm going to vote no today.
I just, I'm going to put my voice in here. I really appreciate CSBA and I'll just pick a few things. I really love going to their educational conference and I get, pick educational topics I can learn more on and get updated on, on things. So, I can be a better trustee. I've really enjoyed the governance classes. Things taught, it's taught me how to be a trustee and what to look for and what's important and how to advocate. I actually really enjoy our Pacer. I've reached out to our regional Pacers several times and I've asked questions and had him gather information for me on different policies from other districts. And then, I've taken that information and helped, helped gather stuff for our board policies from that. I really like the workshops. Like I said, I went to one on the budget. I appreciate their advocating for educational bills. I really like, and this is going to sound weird, but I like the daily news articles that come. And I get to stay topic, you know, current on the topics, you know? Read six articles on education every day of what's current or what the trends are, or what, what districts are facing, their challenges, their success stories. You know, there's, there's a lot of good that they do. And I think it's just important to be a part of the game and to make sure that our district is represented in Sacramento with our voice and sending our delegates for, for things. So, I think we should vote yes.
We also have annually, we meet with our senators and assembly members. And we do that, we've done it in Sacramento the last couple of years. We've done it via Zoom. But we get together as, as board members from our region, from Orange County. And we talk to them specifically about things that impact us in this district, in this county, that are so different than throughout the rest of the county. I've seen things change. I've seen the advocacy that we've done as a group go and, and make change in Sacramento. We currently, just in the last couple of months, all got together and met with Senator Newman, who is the Chair of the Education Committee. That's incredibly important. And when, when he's hearing from all of us as a region, it has a lot more impact than when it's individually people calling. So, when we have a voice that's united and something that's together, we have a greater impact. And I, I really think it's an, an important association to be part of and to continue to be part of.
What were you talking about Senator Newman? Because I heard him on a Zoom and the things that he was saying, I didn't think was representative of a lot of people, what his thoughts and his comments were.
Well, I'd like to know specifically what those are that you didn't agree with. Like, for the ones that I talked to him about, we talk about lots and lots of different things. So, we'll go through every piece of new legislation that's going through and how it impacts different districts and how it impacts us. For example, one of the last ones we talked about was, there's legislation about small school districts versus large school districts and a cap on the, the pay that you can provide for administrators. In small school districts, that makes a bigger difference than it does for us. But it, when you look at the county as a whole, there's, just one example that was just more recent. But it changed what was happening for funding for, for administrators at a, at a small, smaller district site. Some of the other opportunities are, we are able to get together with other unifords that are very similar to ours that, that we normally wouldn't be able to do.
I think.
I've gotten a lot of value out of it. I, I know that some things are not, not everything's perfect and I don't align with every single item, just like you don't. But as a whole and in general, I think it's important to, to continue making our voices heard.
I think it's only representing certain voices. And I would say that me and Sean, we spent our own money. We went up to Sacramento several times and we've sat down with many of the senators and stuff like that without having to be, you know, with CSBA, with other groups of people. And so, I just don't think we need to pay a lobbyist firm to do this. And I would rather see our money go to, to someone else.
I'd like to, I, I, do we have a deadline? We have to decide tonight?
Great question.
It's July 1, when it begins.
Is the renewal? And so, we don't know if we renew July 1 versus August versus... And so we don't know if we renew July one versus August versus
You could take it to August.
September? Like, I mean, cause my question is. Okay. Cause I'd like to know what, I mean, I'd like to feel what the impact is. And if there's no impact, then cool. If there's an impact, then we ramp it back up? Can we table it or can we?
Well, if we table it, then our thing will expire. But it will expire. If we don't vote on it tonight, it expires July first. So technically, we could sit for a whole month. If we just don't vote on it tonight, we can let it sit till August and we can see what the impact was.
Okay.
Okay. That sounds like something we need a little bit more information on. So can we put forty-one and forty-two in the same category?
Yeah, I would say they go together. Well, you can't have one without, you can't have the second one without the first one.
Correct. So as soon as we see if that uh.
I don't mean to put you on the spot, Annette, but.
That's what she gets the big bucks for.
I would like to get an answer to the question is, can we renew, can we start our subscription if we realize in November that we need to do that? Can we do that? And we have time to answer that question because we have till September fifteenth?
So if we don't renew tonight, if we vote no tonight, and then we go a couple of months and we don't like what's going on, we can renew.
We won't know until September fifteenth. I, I'm saying, answering the question of when can we, can we just restart whenever we want?
So that gives us the opportunity to check with them and.
Yeah.
Yes, you can table it until.
Until August? Yeah, that's fine with me. Anybody else? Okay with that idea?
All right, that's uh what it sounds like we'll do. We do have a motion, however. Will you withdraw?
I'll withdraw my motion, make a substitute motion to table. I'll make a substitute motion to table.
And is there anyone to second that motion?
Second, sorry.
Okay, so at this point, we are tabling item forty-one and forty-two in order to revisit in our August meeting. Okay, folks, that leads us to our last piece or last item.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Ms. Buck?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh.
Do we have to vote on the tabling? We didn't vote on the tabling, that's why.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
Backing up. Almost got out.
Open back up, everybody.
Okay, so I need to, let's see, I have a motion to table forty-one and forty-two by Ms. Blades and seconded by Mr. Frazier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, I'm opposed to tabling.
Four, one. Okay, now we can get to our last piece.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. We are adjourned at uh twenty-one fifty-four.